Okay, you're live.
Great. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the June 7th-
This meeting is being recorded.
Oh, okay, that's new.
Yes, it is new.
Good to know.
Welcome to the June 7th, 2021 Meeting of the Millis Select Board. My name's Pete Jermaine. We have with us Aaron Underhill, who's the Vice Chair, and Craig Schultz, the Clerk. Welcome, everyone else. Okay, we have a number of items on our agenda tonight, and we're going to try to move through them fairly rapidly. I have some colleagues who are going to help me in that way, so I know we will continue to do so. The first thing we have are a number of announcements, and I think if I'm not mistaken, the very first one I have is Mr. Hawley's retirement party proclamation, excuse me. And we have Chief Barrett here.
Oh, he is not, unfortunately.
Then I will defer that until he comes in. I was hoping he was here, and I just wasn't seeing him. We have another announcement to make, and that is, and I've got to find it, the Millis Blood Drive. And I want to encourage everyone to come to the blood drive. It starts from 9:30 in the morning, 9 o'clock in the morning, to 2:30 in the afternoon on July 3rd. It's here at the VMB Auditorium. Do you have any other comments, either Mr. Gazinski or anyone else? Uh, no? No? Should be all set?
No. I will say they typically get quite a showing here, and hopefully we can do that again. I would encourage people to sign up for this. You do have to sign up in advance.
I've already signed up for myself. I'm a grave fainter, so I can hardly remember. So, okay. I think what we'll do is we'll move on to the scheduled appointments, and when Chief Barrett's able to join us, we will have him speak to Mr. Hawley's retirement proclamation. So, we have as item number one on our agenda to discuss the local government board committee meeting protocols. And this really has to do with the fact that the governor has now loosened, well loosened or tightened, depending upon how you choose to look at it, the restrictions with respect to how we can hold our meetings. And I'd like Mr. Gazinski, if you're willing, to discuss this in a little more detail with us.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, as I'm sure everyone is fully aware, the state has radically changed the COVID-19 safety protocols over the last few weeks. And the Health Director and I have discussed this at length, and based upon the new protocols, and the fact that as of June 15th, the state of emergency in the Commonwealth will no longer exist, and unless the legislature takes some action, which is unknown at this time, we will be forced to move to in-person anyway because Zoom meetings will end. So, in light of all that, and the fact that the meeting in person has been deemed a safe exercise for all those who have been vaccinated, I'm recommending that the board approve and allow the start of in-person meetings of all local government boards and committees in the town of Millis, in all buildings, town buildings, effective Monday, June 15th. Again, this is the same day that the state of emergency in the Commonwealth expires. And, but with that, I do strongly recommend, as does the Health Director, that all individuals who have not been vaccinated for whatever reason should still wear masks and should still socially distance. We certainly recommend that everyone get vaccinated. And I would also add that, you know, if the board does approve this, then the meetings will start in person on the 15th. However, the legislature is working on a bill currently that would allow remote meetings to continue for an additional 60 to 90 days. If that were to pass, then boards and committees would still have the option for that period of time to continue to meet remotely at the option of that board. But as of right now, I don't believe that's passed, but that something may happen in the next week. So, the bottom line is, any boards and committees that would like to start to meet in person may do so as of June 15th.
Excellent. Thank you.
Mr. Jermaine?
Yes.
I just, I actually just heard from Chief Barrett, who unfortunately cannot make the meeting tonight. He was called away. If you would like me to just read through Mr. Hawley's proclamation, I'm happy to do so.
Let's do so as soon as we finish with this item on the agenda, okay?
Okay, go ahead.
Mr. Schultz?
Yeah, thank you, Mike, Peter. Mike, you scared me. Is it Monday, June 14th? I'm supposed to start a new job on the 14th?
I'm coming in on Sunday to work, but maybe I'm off.
Yeah, you're correct. Let's, I would, I had my date off. Let's go with the 14th. I think that makes more sense, so that at the beginning of the week, any boards and committees for next week could start meeting in person. So, thank you for catching that. I would, I would say that the 14th makes more sense. That was the only comment I had.
Ms. Underhill, anything?
Um, no. I've enjoyed the opportunity to be able to participate remotely because it's, it's been very helpful for me. I am interested in, you know, seeing how things could possibly, there could be allowances in the future, given any policy we may put in place, but I guess I'm ready to see you guys in person.
Well, I think what you're alluding to may come up in just a few more minutes.
Okay.
We'll get to that. But in terms of the meetings, I would encourage the boards to meet in person, starting on the 14th. I think we, as a select board, ought to endorse that, and so I take a motion in that direction.
I move that we resume in-person committee and board meetings at the town hall or wherever as of Monday, June 14th.
Second. So, moving seconded to start once again all the board meetings in person as of June 14th, and this does apply to all boards in the town of Millis. Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Mr. Jermaine?
Yes.
So, the board has been polled, it's unanimous, and that's our new recommendation to the town. Okay, Ms. Beret, please.
So, I'll just speak quickly to this. Vincent Jerry Hawley, many people probably know him as Jerry, was on the fire department for 34 years here. He is also a town resident, and he has done a lot for our town. He left the fire department recently. They had a going-away party last Friday, I believe, in which they gave him this proclamation, which was issued by the select board. They had a little party for him at the station, and they took him home in style with a whole, they had all the fire trucks bring him home in style, so that was really nice. I don't know if you want to actually read the proclamation. Maybe our, typically our clerk reads the proclamation if he would like to?
I was just going to suggest if we could ask the clerk to please read the proclamation. The clerk has to make it just a hair bigger on the small screen or-
Oh, okay.
All right, I'm gonna go into the read. "The select board deems it a great privilege and honor to recognize and thank Vincent Jerry Hawley for an outstanding 34 years of service in his position as Lieutenant and EMT of the Town of Millis Fire Department. Lieutenant Hawley joined the Millis Fire Department in 1987 as a call firefighter. He became one of the first two full-time firefighters and EMTs in 2000. He also served as EMS coordinator for several years and was actively involved in the purchase of ambulance number one and fire engine two. Lieutenant Hawley was always carried, has always carried himself in a professional manner, earning the respect and admiration of numerous firefighters and EMTs throughout the department. Lieutenant Hawley has proudly, has proudly served the community with duty, honor, and respect. We, the members of the select board, do hereby join all the citizens of the Town of Millis to extend our sincere appreciation for Jerry's dedicated dedication to ensure the safety of the citizens of the Town of Millis, and to proudly declare Saturday, June 12th, 2021 as Vincent Jerry Hawley Day in the Town of Millis, given this 28th day of May, 2021, and signed by all of us."
Thank you very much. I'll take a motion from the board. Will we authorize the, I think, the official day and the citation?
Second.
Moving seconded to cite the Saturday, the 28th of May, 2021, as Vincent Jerry Hawley Day. I'll poll the board. Ms. Underhill?
Just an amendment first, Saturday, June 12th, 2021.
Did I say?
You said May.
Well, it says on the-
It does, it's there.
Right, this was given to him in May.
So, with the amendment, yes.
Right, but the day is June 12th, right. Confusing.
Second, okay. And we gotta make this green big report at the end there, so I was-
Sorry.
Okay, and Mr. Schultz?
Aye.
Mr. Jermaine?
Aye.
It's unanimous. Thank you very much, and thank you, Jerry Hawley. We really appreciate the service you've run for the town.
And then, Mr. Chair, I think unless I missed it, that you had one more announcement regarding a grant that we just received that Mr. Weiss was going to just speak quickly to?
That is correct. We, this afternoon, if I can find it on my screen, just received notification of a $50,000 grant for charging station just behind the library for two vehicles. But I'm gonna let Mr. Weiss give us the details, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Bob Weiss, Energy Manager for the town, and that's pretty much the details. We'll have a, we've been given a grant from Mass Department of Environmental Protection. Comes to about $50,000 to install a two-port charging station for electric vehicles. As you mentioned, it's at the library. It's, our partners on this are Power Options and also Horizon Solution, and it is completely paid for except for the new parking lines and the signage that will be required, and it is also handicap expressible. So, you'll probably hear a little bit more as we bring some documents to this board. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. I just want to comment that these grants don't just happen. Mr. Weiss has very successfully gone after and gained numerous grants for us in these areas. So, again, thank you very much. Do I have any comments from the board?
Thank you. It's great news. Thank you very much for doing the legwork and getting yet another grant. Very exciting. Thank you.
It is great work, yeah. Anyone in the audience?
I'll let, yeah, if I can say one more thing too, I did-
Oh, I think so.
I did have a partner here, and that was the director from the DPW, Jim McKay, and from our end at the town, we worked pretty closely with Power Options and with Horizon Solutions to get this grant.
Very good. Thank you again. Really appreciate the effort you put in to get these grants, and it does pay off for the town, no question about it. Okay. Next item is going to be the appointment of two DPW summer seasonal workers. I'll defer to Mr. Gazinski on this.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And upon the recommendation of the DPW Director, I'm appointing, hopefully with the board's ratification, two individuals to fill the position of seasonal summer help, and those two individuals are Brian Nichols and Christopher Goke, both of the Town of Millis. And these positions go a long way in helping us get all our myriad of tasks done over the summer. And Mr. McKay went through the full process of doing the search for these individuals, and I'll turn it over to Mr. McKay to talk a little bit about the background here and some of the positive work that these folks will be doing over the summer.
Thank you, Mr. Gazinski. Both gentlemen would have been here, but they both had a baseball game today, so that's why they're not here. I think you probably remember Brian, Brian came to the board. He built a duggo over at the baseball field, at the high school field. Both of them are Millis High School graduates. They just graduated the other day, and hopefully they'll be with us through their college, you know, during summer, during, when they go through college. So, it is a rite of passage that we come every year and appoint two or three people. One of these positions will be paid this year out of the building project, and the other one will be paid out of the DPW general fund. Looking forward to them, we need them. There's a lot of work to get done, and looking forward to start. They do have to get a physical and a, no, they did the background check, and I think that's just it, a physical before appointment.
Excellent.
And drug screen, correct?
I think it's terrific that we're getting more of these individuals interested. I would hope we also see some women begin to apply for some of these positions in the not-too-distant future. I would encourage that, and I know Mr. McKay does encourage that, so please, if we have any. I'll take a motion on this.
I move that we ratify the town administrators' appointments of Brian Nichols and Christopher Goke for summer help for the DPW, starting June 8th, 2021, and ending September 30th, 2021, pending physicals.
Second. Moving seconded to appoint, further town administrator's recommendation, the two individuals, Brian Nichols and Christopher Goke, to work with the DPW as summer work. I'll poll the board. Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Mr. Jermaine, yes, it's unanimous. Thank you very much. Thank you. That's terrific. Okay. The next item is associated with our Police Department and Public Safety Dispatcher, and I think I'll let our Chief of Police, Mr. Safire, Chief Safire, discuss this with us.
Good evening. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
All right, excellent. New setup here, so I apologize. I come before the board tonight requesting consideration of an appointment of a part-time dispatcher. Typically, we like to have anywhere between three and five part-time dispatchers on hand. We are losing one of our most valuable dispatchers, probably in October. He's gonna be retiring, so we'd like to enhance the list of part-timers. That being said, this is no cost to the town, the appointment of this part-time dispatcher. His training would be covered under the 911 Training Grant, which we get every year. So, this evening, I bring before you Max Moran. He is a Millis resident, and he's a graduate of Millwich University, as well as a member of the Army National Guard. He'd be a great asset to the Police Department and Fire Department Communication Center, and I respectfully ask the appointment of Mr. Moran as part-time dispatcher.
Thank you very much. Do we have any discussion, Mr. Gazinski or anyone?
Nope. I think the chief has an excellent candidate, and I join with the chief and respectfully ask the board to ratify my appointment of Mr. Max Moran as a part-time public safety dispatcher.
Okay, I'll take motion from the board if there are no more comments.
I have one question, actually.
Go for it.
Does Mr. Moran need to do a physical, or is it just the Cory and background check that's needed?
Cory background check, which has been completed, and he's scheduled for a physical and drug screen this coming, next Thursday, this coming Thursday.
This Thursday?
Yes.
So, would it be pending that, and then the first day would be Friday? Is that what we would?
Yeah, it would be pending his physical and drug screen, and his first day, we can use Monday, the 14th, June 14th.
I move that we approve the town administrator's appointment of Mr. Max Moran as a part-time public safety dispatcher, pending a completed drug screening and physical to begin with us on Monday, June 14th.
Second. Moving seconded to consider the appointment of Mr. Max Moran for a part-time public safety dispatcher of those police station, further recommendation of the police chief and the town administrator. I will poll the board. Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
Mr. Jermaine, yes, it's unanimous. Thank you very much, chief, and welcome Mr. Moran aboard. Thank you. Okay.
Thank you very much.
The next item on our agenda is the appointment of an Economic Development Committee member by, for Mr. Weiss.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and, well, now I'm, Bob Weiss is the Economic Development Director for the town, and I'm asking tonight, on behalf of the, on behalf of the Economic Development Committee, that the board appoint Christine Lagos to the Economic Development Committee. Lagos could not make it to this evening's meeting. However, the EDC did nominate her, as she has excellent qualifications, an MBA in Entrepreneurship and Marketing from Babson College. She's also the manager of Alumni Engagement Annual Giving at Babson, and she also sits on the Educational Foundation Board at Tri-County Vocational School. She's a longtime resident of the town and lives with her husband and her two children in Millis, so we ask that the board appoint Christine Lagos to the committee this evening.
Excellent. Comments? Mr. Gazinski?
I have, I have no comments, Mr. Chairman. Certainly looks like a great appointment to the committee, and I would, I would support the appointment.
Excellent.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes. I attended that committee in Aaron's absence, and, and she seemed like she's ready to go and eager to have on the committee, and she came within a heartbeat of appointing chair, but I pointed out they could not make her chair until she was actually on the committee. So, she is eager to be on the committee, and I think she'd be a great addition.
Excellent.
And if I may say, she's also very interested in 64 Exchange Street, which is the Lansing-Millis Depot, and she'd like to see the town move ahead to do something with that building.
Well, hopefully we can work something out. Do I have any other comments from the community? In that case, I'll take a motion from the board.
This is, the screen's gonna blink in just a moment. Mr. Chairman, I move that we, we appoint Christine Lagos to the Economic Development Committee.
Second.
Moving seconded to appoint Ms. Christine Lagos to the Economic Development Committee. I'll poll the board. Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Mr. Jermaine, yes. I'll get the names, yes.
Two of us here.
It is very difficult for some of us sometimes. Be easy on me. Thank you very much. It's the unanimous vote, and we'll welcome Ms. Lagos to that committee. Thank you very much, and thank you for volunteering. Okay, um, do we have the folks from the school?
Oh, he is joining as we speak.
Ms. Beret?
Hold on one moment. He's just joining as we speak. I'm admitting him. I'm gonna put him on the spot here.
Karen, you're muted.
Oh.
Shades of our-
Gosh, I, I'm not gonna miss this. I'm not gonna miss it, but Mr. Randa is currently joining. He's connecting to audio as we speak. We did tell him it was 7:30, so we're about three minutes ahead. I don't know if there's something you want to take quickly as he joins?
Okay, I'm going to look and-
Actually, if you would like to take Pete out of order, because I do see Terry Wiggins here. If you want to take, and of course, now I can't find my thing, the statement of interest letter to the MSBA. Well, Terry's here to speak to that.
Sure, why not? Let's take that statement of interest letter to the MSBA. Mr. Wigan?
Oh, Mr. Wigan, you must be muted.
You have no-
Can you hear me now?
Yes. Oh, now we can't hear you again.
Can't hear you again.
The wonders of Zoom.
If we get back in person, maybe it's gonna be a little minute shorter because of the-
You're absolutely right.
Terry, I think it's your wire or something, because you moved, and I could hear you for a second, and then you cut out again.
Try that.
Yeah, that works.
All right, don't move.
All right. I'm freezing right here. Okay, so, as you know, because we went, you went through this process with the Clyde brand elementary schools, the precursor to starting, and I mean literally, starting the process of a building project is what's called a statement of interest that's filed with the Massachusetts School Building Authority. The school committee, for the last several months, has been working on this. At their last meeting, it was completed, and they voted to propose it to the MSBA. But when, when a SOI is proposed, it requires both the school committee and the, I think technically it's the chief executive of the town that signs, but typically speaking, obviously the select board would also approve that. One of the things I need to explain about an SOI is that this doesn't mean that a year from now, we're gonna go to town meeting and ask for a building. This process takes four to six years at a minimum to rise to the point of where you would be invited to do what's called a feasibility study. And then typically, that feasibility study will take one to two years, after which, at that point, depending on the feasibility study and what comes out of it, there would theoretically be a proposal to an annual town meeting for whatever the project might be. So, this is a long process. This is not something that is going to be proposed this June and happen this fall, or happen next spring, or happen a year from this spring. This is a start of a very long process to try and work at renovating, probably, I'm guessing, a renovation addition to the Millis Middle High School, and we are looking at it as the middle high school is one building for obvious reasons.
Thank you. I want to reiterate what Terry has just said. This starts a process. It doesn't mean we're committing to anything, but it is important for the town to have the paperwork and the process started, so that if we, as a town, decide as time goes on, this is important to the town, at least we have the wherewithal to move forward. Without starting this process, there's no chance of having the funding from MSBA or anything else. There's no, no commitment here on our part, there's no commitment on their part, nothing is happening other than it's starting a process. So, there'll be plenty of time for community discussion and all sorts of other discussion to take place over the next at least four or five, six years before anything of any consequence really begins to happen. So, we should begin with discussions, and we need to, as a community, step up to the fact that these are issues that shouldn't be deferred beyond the eight-to-10-year period, which is probably the timeframe we're talking about. I just use that off the top of my head, it could be six to 10, but whether it is or not, it's not something- not, it's not something that happens tomorrow. Any comments, please, from the board members?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Schultz?
If you remember back to the elementary school process, it, it did take, and actually, to the point of construction, it was about a five-year process from when we got approved to when we actually opened the doors. So, it is a very long process, and in the elementary school, we were, we were quite rushed, because we were moved to the top of the list because another town got pulled out for a project at about the same price point as ours. But in typical years, it is, as Terry said, you know, four, five years before you do get any funding notification. And then at that point is when you start doing all your feasibilities and everything else. But right now, it's prove the need, see if you can get approved for consideration, and then, then the process starts in earnest after the state says that they're interested in partnering with you. So, it's, it's a long ways out, but it is important that we start it now, so we don't miss the opportunity and just defer and without applying.
Thank you. Any other comments? I'll open it to comments from the audience. Hearing none, I will then request a vote from the board to proceed.
If I may interject here?
Yes, Mr. Wigan.
What I had also, you may not be prepared to take a vote tonight, albeit I'd love to have a vote tonight. There's a very specific resolution that I believe I passed along as well. Don't know if you have it in front of you or not, but.
I have it.
Do you?
I was going to say, we do. I can share the screen if you want me to?
Yeah, I just want to be very careful that, that you pass the, the specific resolution.
That's the actual form of vote, Terry?
Yeah.
Okay, so, you, they should have, that was in the packet, so they should be able to read through that?
Yeah, I did go through it, and I can't find it right now. Just give me a second.
The, the thing that I'm, and this is my error, and I apologize, the thing that I probably didn't and should have done is I probably should have sent over the committee's version, because there's a section in there where you have to cite the priorities, and I don't believe I included that, Karen.
No, you didn't, you didn't, actually. That is, it just left as blank.
Yeah.
So, we, you may, you may want to just do the actual vote at the, at the next meeting.
Also, what I have in front of me is not filled in for the resolution.
Right.
Right, right. That's what we're saying.
There's also, as you have highlighted in yellow, priorities, and you're right. Let's defer this to a subsequent meeting. I think it's important.
Okay.
We start the discussion, and that's what we've done.
Our deadline is June 25th, and I believe you have one more meeting before that date.
The 21st, Terry, so I will, I will add that on.
That will be, yeah, that will, that will be fine, because, again, this, this is a document that's ready to be submitted electronically as soon as we have a vote from, from you folks, assuming that it is positive, and we hope it will be.
Great. Then we'll make sure that's on our agenda for the 21st, I think it is.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. I'm going to move on to the next item on the list, unless there's something else. That's a request to rename the Plain Street Bridge to the Wishing Bridge, Life Experience from the Life Experience School. And I guess I will open that to Ms. Burey and to the, Randa?
Mr. Randa.
Yeah, Mr. Randa's here. I will say that this, this request came in, so the Life Experience School is at 16 Lavender Street. They have been wonderful neighbors to us. We love to have them, and they've come to see us for some other things before. We did work on a crosswalk at the corner of Lavender and Exchange, which was made to be wheelchair accessible, and we worked well with them for that project. So, this, this request actually came in about a year ago, but with all of COVID going on and the craziness, it is just coming before you now, so, Mr. Rand, I'll let you speak to what the school is looking to do. Oh, I think he froze up.
Mr. Randa?
He is frozen.
All right, I had that problem.
In the meantime, I will, I will share my screen, so you can kind of see what we're talking about while he, he comes. He comes up here. Hold on.
If you can still hear me, my screen is sort of, there we go.
There you are, yes.
Okay, so this is, as you can see, the, the letter that two of our individuals submitted. These are members of the nearby communities of Holliston and Sherburne, and the goal was to activate the potential of an area of town that people pass over and really don't give it a second thought, but we did when the big bridge was being rebuilt. And we all went out there, pulled the wheelchairs, and those who managed to get there with walkers, because we were interested in what was going on down on the street from us. We're on Lavender Street, and we saw the bridge being rebuilt. And one of the things we noted is the way it arced and over the railroad tracks, which no longer are active, but what we realized is that would be a special spot for something, and that something was, because of the nature of children and young people, is to make a wish. So, we started traveling over that bridge, and we designated it, for us, a wishing bridge. And it, you know, through word of mouth, people told us that, well, that's a special little spot. It, it's very clear when you enter that arc, there's an opportunity to ignore the moment or to seize it. And we chose to, to make it a wishing bridge, and we created a banner. We would stand out there for people who would drive by, and, you know, in, in light of the pandemic and all that we've been through, and this, this started 18 years ago, so this isn't something that we just arrived at. We've been pursuing the potential of a moment in time in the little town of Millis to make a wish. It's a simple little opportunity, but we all know that there are areas of each town that, that may or may not be designated, but once they are, they can offer something special. So, that's what we would like to propose. By the way, my son and daughter-in-law and our two grandchildren live on Lavender Street, right across from the Life Experience School. And just for those who aren't familiar with it, it's a day program for adults with disabilities. Now, one would say, why is it called?
Oh, Louis, we lost you again. That's unfortunate.
Well.
Oh, there you are.
I think we have the gist of it, and I will openly ten years offering program. So, to, to, to make a long story short, we're requesting from the town consideration to do something very, very simple, and that is to take a bridge that nobody pays any attention to and give it some importance. And as we leave and knock on wood, we're heading around the corner on this pandemic, people are wishing for a lot of things. And going over that little bridge, if there was a sign on either side that simply said, Millis Wishing Bridge, and the kids at Clyde Brown, my two grandchildren attend there, the Montessori School and our group on Lavender Street, if we could nurture that notion that here's a spot in town where you can make a wish. Now, there are things considerably more important, but not necessarily more significant than having a place in town where children and adults make wishes. So, I don't want to belabor the point. It's a beautiful concept that our gang embraced, and if the town would see fit to consider that, they'd never regret it. And as people who drive through Millis from other towns, if they drove over the Plain Street Bridge and they saw that it was designated a wishing bridge, I could assure you, it would cross their mind to make a wish. And what harm could that possibly do? So, that's why we wanted to, to be presented to the board, and I hope you seriously consider it, because this is a really good time to take, you know, a moment to reflect on what we all hope for as we turn the corner on this pandemic. So, thank you for allowing me to speak to you tonight. Thank you very much. Let me open it for discussion among the board members. Any comments? Mr. Schultz?
Yeah, I think that it's an interesting concept and it's an idea. I hadn't thought about naming the bridge. I hadn't thought about the protocols for naming a bridge, if we have any. I see squares and other things designated in town to people from town, and my only thought is, I don't know if there's a, I, I just don't know the protocol for doing that and whether it's something that we have, other areas we've named, street squares and other things after, I see plans periodically.
Yeah. Ms. Underhill?
I, I see what, what Craig is asking. Do we know if there's any kind of policy or protocol in terms of naming things in town?
But, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I would say that I did reach out to both the DPW Director and Chief, Police Chief Safia, who are both online here, and I don't, as far as I know, there aren't any specific protocols. Neither of them had an issue with, with doing this. I don't know if you want to just name it the Wishing Bridge for a date certain, you know, a few years or something, and then see how that goes? I don't know, Mr. Gzinski, if you have more to say about that?
Yes, just to confirm that, we're not aware of any policy in place that would prevent the board from doing this. And so, I don't see any drawback at this point to moving forward with this. Certainly, if there were an issue that developed over time, a future board could change it, change the name of it if there was a problem, but we don't see any issues at this point to move ahead with that. We don't see any restrictions on the board as far as making that designation for the bridge.
And, Mr. Chair?
I'm sorry, I, I, that cut out on me, I think. Could you just summarize quickly what you said? I, forgive me, but, but the reception here is poor.
No, I was just, I was just saying, I don't believe there are any restrictions on the board as far as making a determination to name the bridge as, as they see appropriate at this time. There is no current policy in place that would prevent that. Certainly, if the board wanted to develop a policy going forward, you could look at that and would start working on something along those lines, but currently, there would be nothing prohibiting the board from taking that action.
Let me make a suggestion to the board, if I may. Based on what I've heard, perhaps we move forward, but at the moment, give it a limited timeframe of perhaps a year, during which time we will, if we feel it's important enough, put a policy together, and then decide how we want to move forward beyond that year, if that might be acceptable to members of the board.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I just wanted to add one other thing. I don't know if anyone's been paying attention to the Recreation Department, but they currently have a thing called Project Smile going on, where there are murals, which have been placed all around town, interactive murals, to try to increase mental health awareness and kind of a happy feeling in town. We deal with, as Mr. Randa said, with this, a lot of negative things that have gone on, and it's been a rough year for everyone, so I think this would be a lovely addition to what Chrissy has already put in place with the murals to now have the Wishing Bridge. So, just a little, just a little something in support of this. Thank you.
Yeah. I might add that, and while I can fully appreciate the, the importance of totally analyzing the implications of a decision like this, there are moments in time that avail themselves. And one year from now, a wishing bridge won't matter. We are at a brink of optimism and, and expectation that things are going to look up. That's when you make wishes. You wait a year, and that's fine, if we wait a year, and it'll perhaps get passed, and then perhaps it would get named a Wishing Bridge, but it will miss its moment. It's not a big deal. It's about as innocuous and as, and I don't like the word simplistic, but the meaning of it is so simple, you can't miss it, because we have suffered so. And in my work in bereavement, as I work with families, I know that everybody is, you know, at tiptoe stance, appreciating every opportunity to believe things are going to get better, and children especially do that by making wishes. And my grandchildren live on Lavender Street, right around the block, and they have grown up their whole life as all the members of our school, making wishes on the bridge. If the town chose to name it that, more people would do it. If they chose not to, then that's okay, too. It's, it's not for me to say, but I just know that if there was a sign there that said Millis Wishing Bridge, and people passed over it, there would be discussions in the, in the car, with the children, with everyone, as to what does that mean? And before you know it, by golly, they might start taking a moment in their own mind and in their heart to make a wish. That's all this is about. There is, it is not complicated. It's as simple as that, and unfortunately, simple things get construed as being more complicated than they are. We would pay for the sign, we would pay for the total expense of the experiment, and if you wanted to make it for one year to see if it's worth doing, well, that's not a bad idea either. That was, you know, brought up earlier. All I know is waiting a year isn't worth doing, because I know one thing about catastrophes, whether it be wars or whether it be anything else, people tend to want to forget about it, and this is a good time to be wishful. So, sorry to extend my, my invitation.
It's unfortunate, Mr. Randa, that your phone cut out at times, because I think we're moments away from taking a vote on this in affirmative. I weren't going to delay it for a year, we were saying, name it for a year. So, your connection unfortunately cut out, I think, and you missed that part of it, but I think.
I did.
Your long soliloquy, we were about ready to go into the vote. I don't think you've dissuaded us from that vote, but I'll make a motion that we name it for one year, the Wishing Bridge, and I know from the Economic Development Committee's meeting that I attended, a 11-by-22 sign was like 25 bucks or something, so if we wanted one for each, that's not a earth-shaking expense. So, I'd make a motion that we name it for one year, the Wishing Bridge.
Okay.
To move seconded to name the bridge, the Wishing Bridge, I'll poll the board. Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Mr. Jermaine? Yes. So, you have your Wishing Bridge, we are naming it for one year, and what goes beyond the year, we don't know yet, but that's what you have. Thank you very much. Well, and thank you, and we, of course, would always want it to include the Millis Wishing Bridge, so people who are passing through our town know where that Wishing Bridge is, because some people drive through towns and they don't pay attention. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. We're on to a couple of items on the agenda, and I think we're pretty much close to time anyway, for once. These have to do with sewer connection requests at 1178 Main Street is the first one. These are information-only discussions right now. I, unless I misunderstood where we're coming from, there will be no vote on this this evening. This is just to give us some information, to give the board an opportunity to ask questions if they choose to do so. So, I'm going to ask Mr. Merrican and Mr. McKay, please join us.
Good evening. Dan Merrican, Legacy Engineering. Karen, could I share my screen?
Yes, please. Let me stop my share, sorry.
Okay, so, the first one this evening is for 1178 Main Street. This is actually three individual lots that have been kicking around for a long, long time, been on the market for a long, long time, and I'm here on behalf of Mark Ha- And I'm here on behalf of Mark Howe, who's with us tonight as well, who would like to develop this property. It's right here at the intersection of Main Street and Hammond Lane. This is the bowling alley, but that's offices directly across the street. We've appeared before the planning board to discuss this at a high level. What Mark would like to do is to build a two-story apartment building here in the front. This would be the facade that would face Main Street. And then, in the back, along Hammond Lane, build some duplexes. So, obviously, connection to sewer is an important thing. I've discussed this thought with the board in past projects. We have sewer to the property. We have sewer on Main Street. So, we have sewer on a street that the property fronts on already. There's no extension involved. It's simply a connection. But of course, the sewer is vital to the project. The connection is vital to the project. And quite frankly, Mark is at the point where he's ready to take the risk of purchasing the property and then go through permitting. But if he does not know that he would be able to connect to sewer, then that's a problem. So, what we've done is we've provided you with this concept plan. It's actually a slightly different concept plan. This is the one we're going to go with. This building up front is lower and wider, same number of units, 12 units. We'd have around, it's not nailed down yet, 38 or 40 bedrooms, which I think you're going to hear about in the next presentation in more detail. What we use for the applications is, we use the state's Title V sewage estimate for bedrooms, which is 110 gallons per day per bedroom. And if you use that rate, you end up with 4,108 gallons per day. We know for a fact that that is a much higher figure than real, actual daily flows from our residential use. Actual average daily flows are half or less. So, it's around 2,000 gallons per day for this project to connect to the sewer. And we wanted to come to you like we have on past projects because, quite frankly, the cost to design the project and go through permitting is significant. And this applicant really needs to know if he's going to be able to connect to the sewer. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have about this project or about the proposed connection. What we've done in the past is that the board has taken a vote to allow in concepts the connection, subject to a technical review down the line by the board's engineering consultant, GCG, once the design of the project is completed.
Mr. Merrickham, I do have a couple of questions myself and all of you on the board. The first one is, are there any 40B units in here?
No, not, no. We don't think so at this point. That's a question that the planning board asked. Again, we're at a kind of an initial concept phase on the site design. I don't think so, but I'm not, that's not a definitive answer.
Okay. Now, the second part is more fundamental, and that is, you know that we have sewer constraints within the town, at least as the Charles River Authority and so on have identified them. And under those conditions, it would be very difficult for us to even consider supporting something like this until we resolve how we're going to deal with these sewer constraints that we do have. Whether they're considered real or not, they do affect the town. So, that's something that we, as a board, are going to have to take into consideration as we move forward. As I said, this evening, I'm looking at this as an information session and exchange. But those are my initial two comments. Anybody else on the board?
I have a question, Mr. Chair.
Please.
This might be to Jim McKay. I've always been told that when the sewer line goes past a property, that property built or unbuilt, or maybe I've always believed, let's put it that way, that that property built or unbuilt is assessed on some level of first sewer betterment and second, is there capacity assessment when that goes through an open vacant lot like that?
That is correct. But we've researched this property here. Actually, Mr. Carter was looking through all his records from years gone by to see if this property was ever calculated in the calculations. The last report that we submitted to the board and to the Enterprise Committee, this property, although the sewer fronts it, there was never any large calculation of sewer for this property. Because even all my days on the planning board, I mean, we've had multiple people come in about this property. And this is actually the first real secure intent that we've ever really had. So, we are researching that as we speak, but we can't find any numbers in any of the calculations as of yet.
And the reason I ask is oftentimes, when you actually build it, you're used to go down through the cesspool, I believe. You know, if there's a vacant lot that can have a house on there, oftentimes, it's assessed for usage at a higher rate than what actually occurs when a house is built. But in this case, if it hasn't been, that's no net savings.
For the, we know that there was, you know, in our research going back, we found, and Dan can, you know, also that there's three foundations on the property, or there's three-something on this property. So, and if I look back, I think there was, it must have been hooked up to a septic system at the time, because there was never sewer on the property. But we think there was some sort of a mill, something in there many, many years ago.
Because I share Peter's concern with the adding capacity, but I was hoping it was already in the assessment, you know. And I'd have a different view of this if this was a parcel, if this was a parcel where the sewer line would have to be extended. But since the sewer line doesn't have to be extended, I'm thinking, there's a lot to think about on this one.
Ms. Underhill?
I share the same concerns that have been brought up, obviously. Whether, you know, on paper, on paper might be one number, reality might be another number. But where we're sitting right now, we have to tread very carefully on what we are allowed to do, what we have left to allocate here. This might not be a really relevant question, maybe a little strange, but do developments of any sort, other than just like a single-family house, do those ever do septic? Or is it only like a sewer situation?
Sometimes they do septic. But you can see on this site, we have a lot of wetlands here, so there's a lot of constraints that limit the opportunity for that.
Mr. McKay, may I ask a question? And that is, given the status in our community with sewer at this point, do you know where we stand as of today? I know that some new units have come online, so we've got potentially some new meetings, but I just don't know what the status is at this time.
So, we know that of both developments, and I think Dan's going to give you information on his next presentation, of a full development that's been built in how those numbers do skew. I mean, from the very high of what we think, what we're carrying, and when actuality is all done, that they're done. We can see that in the Toll Brothers, we do have flow, not projections, we actually have actual flows coming out of what, 80-something units, that we can compare to what we are actually carrying for that. So, we can get all that information, you know, for the board to make a more accurate, you know, in the Enterprise Committee, so that we can make a more thoughtful decision on this.
I appreciate that. I think it's important that we understand what the actual versus the projected, probably better terms, and I can never remember them. But the point is, we do have constraints. We have to work within them. I don't want to take away the board's opportunity to make decisions like this, even if we are constrained. But the most important thing is, let's understand exactly where we're at and what the implications are, so that we can make an informed decision either way. So, I think that would be great if you could get us that information for the near term.
We get that very quickly. And that was my question, basically. If we were already carrying 800 or 10 gallons per bedroom on this, on some assumed development build-out, then that mitigation, that 50% number that's decided, does make a lot of sense, and it does actually reduce the flow, or the needed flow. But in this case, if we haven't been carrying anything, it's just been, no matter what it is, even if it's 50 gallons a day, it's 50 gallons a day per bedroom more than we were anticipating at 110. I guess the other question is, is there mitigation a developer can do to reduce the burden on other households, to reduce the burden on the system? And this is the first time I've sat on a select board meeting on a sewer connection, so I'm not sure how all that works.
Yes, we have to come up with a plan for that. And I think we actually have, the Enterprise Committee is working on that process as we go right now. There is, we can have a developer help pay for some of the II, you know, that we're paying for. You know, they can buy the low-flow toilets. They can buy, and we can, you know, distribute them through the system. I think that just on, closing on the point on, you know, we thought these projections, we kept on saying like with Toll Brothers, oh, it's going to be 5, 5, 8, 9, 10 years. You know, in Hickory Hill, and we thought, Akon Place. I mean, luckily for the town, these things are selling faster than they can build them. So, we actually have more accurate numbers that we thought we wouldn't be able to project, you know, five years from now. And we actually have them today. You know, we can get them today. Because these developments are building, and it's good for us, us Millis residents, that these projects are building out and they're selling quicker than we ever anticipated. So, we can get those numbers, and I think that would be the most helpful thing for the board and the Enterprise Committee, you know, moving forward to make decisions like this.
And I guess, first off, I think it's, I'm not opposed to development at all. It's great to see it coming in. I just, our sewer capacity, which I keep hearing is over 100% to what we've contracted for already, and that's a concern. I'm a accountant by nature, and once you get beyond 100%, you've got a problem, from what I understand, if it's a limit.
But you're not over. You're discharging something like 75% of what you're allowed to discharge for the trade plan.
I understand, but there's a difference between what we're actually discharging versus the calculations they use and the amounts of latitude on either end that they want us to use. Regardless, the point is that we need to get actual numbers. And I think, Mr. McKay, and I've been on that committee also, I think we need to get that. Perhaps I can discuss that with you tomorrow or the next day, if we get some more details.
Yeah, and if we can just get clarity about which number is the right number to be concerned about, the paper number of 100 or the actual of 75%? Or what number should I be watching when I decide if I'm over or under? And how does that work?
We have an obligation, it turns out, to watch both numbers. But that doesn't mean we don't make decisions. We can make decisions, but we need to make informed decisions, as I will sometimes say, with analysis for five. But at any rate, at this stage, it's information gathering. I think that's a fair way of proceeding with this discussion. Is that okay with you, Mr. McKay?
Yes.
And Mr. Merrickham?
So, what's the timeline on trying to come to a decision on this? I mean, the town's been talking about this sewer issue for a year and a half and about creating policies. And, you know, this is in the downtown corridor, where, you know, we would love to see development and redevelopment, and we're basically stuck at a standstill now.
We are anxious as you to see a development move forward. I'm not going to give you a timeline. There are a number of issues we are discussing. I discuss them with the town manager and with Mr. McKay on a regular basis. We will move as swiftly as we can, because about all I can tell you, I'm not going to commit to a timeline right now.
Yeah, I'd be, I'd like to see the information provided to us by our next meeting, if that's possible. Not to say there'll be a decision made there, but as you said, Mr. Merrickham, this is the downtown corridor. This is one of those spots that does make, in my opinion, a lot more sense for development than some of the more rural areas of the town. So, I think the better the theory, the information, the sooner we can come to some kind of conclusion without committing to a timeframe.
I would also say that before we even consider proceeding, we have to have input from the community. There are members of the Enterprise Commission whom I think we should hear from. They have something to say. But let's get our numbers and let's get the people who have actually been researching these issues to have their opportunity to discuss them with us also. This is something that does take a little time, but we will move as quickly as we can.
Excuse me, may I say something, Mr. Chairman?
Of course.
Thank you. Mark Howe. So, I'm the person that's trying to get this developed. And unfortunately, I've got contracts and responsibilities, and I can't just proceed and continue on an open-ended agenda. And we've spent a lot of time looking at this site, speaking with the planning board, discussing how best to improve this site for the town, having it rezoned. And now, hearing that the, that a conclusion can't be made on the sewer, I'm puzzled by it. And how does the board go ahead and deal with future developments? Is it a pick and choose? Or is it first-come, first-served? And as Dan had asked for a timeline, are we looking at 30 days, 60 days? I can't, I haven't purchased the property yet, and I'll have to make a decision whether to continue. And I don't even know if the seller will want to continue with it. I'm just, all my cards on the table.
I appreciate where you're coming from. We do not want to stifle opportunity like this. This has been discussed at the Enterprise Committee for over a year. We have to come up with a policy. This is not going to be deferred because we don't have a policy. But it will be deferred at least until the next meeting, because we have to have the actual facts in front of us. And right now, I don't know what our actual dumping is versus what our requirements are per Charles River. And don't get me wrong, would I like to go ahead? I think all of us would. But they've put constraints on us that are legal constraints. And we have to look at where we are and how the effluent, if you will, gets rated. And what it means as implications to this community with respect to sewers and everything. We will look at trying to get more capacity. It's not available. So, we have to live with what we've got. That doesn't mean it's all bad, because as units come online, as you've heard, it turns out the projected flow is probably 50% higher than the actual flow, or twice as high, I should say. And the actual flow turns out to be 50% of what the projected was. So, there could, in fact, with new units coming on, be capacity. But we have to look at that and look at what's going on in the community. There's no simple answer. We will move as quickly as possible, I can assure you. This will be discussed at the next meeting. What I can't assure you is, based on what we get for numbers, whether we can agree, not agree, or what. And I just can't make that commitment without the information. But we are trying to move as rapidly as possible. Is that fair?
I appreciate that. And I will do what I can on my end to hold on and wait till the next meeting.
And my, I'm always open for comment. If you want to call me, write to me, or any member of the board, or the town administrator, we're happy to discuss things with you. We're not, there's nothing here anybody's trying to conceal. We need to get this information.
My last question is, give me directions to that wishing well.
Mr. Jermaine, if I may?
Ms. McGinnis, yes.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Kathy McGinnis, 78 Island Road, Enterprise Committee. Could I ask if, through the chair, if the applicant has perked the property at all?
They have not done any test holes yet.
Thank you. May I also ask the total number of units contemplated?
That's 12 apartments in the apartment building and six duplexes, so three duplexes, so six condos.
So, 18 units?
Right.
Total? And usually, a single-family or whatever unit is 15,000, 20,000 to have a, through the chair, just for information, to have a perk, septic system designed, and who knows how much to install, at 10,000. So, to answer Mr. Schultz about the mitigation... So to answer Mr. Schultz about the mitigation, please take into account, you know, 18 times 25,000 or so would be a fair amount to ask for mitigation purposes, either for II or to put into the sewer fund for people. Is that something that the Chair would think about? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McInnes. Are there any other comments?
Just a thought, Mr. Chairman, you know, obviously, anybody who's connected to sewer pays in the annual quarterly fees to the town for the privilege of being connected to the sewer. So that's the difference between building a septic system and being connected to sewer.
Okay. And given that, I'm going to move on to the next topic, is that okay?
Yes.
And the next one is the request at Acorn Place condos.
Okay, so this, I guess, is just going to be some background information for you as you contemplate things over the next two weeks. Acorn Place, I think you're all familiar with, is an over-55 condo development off of Acorn Street. It has 48-odd units, they're configured in duplex units primarily, there's 100 bedrooms there. We came to you a while back, and you issued a sewer connection permit allowing 11,000 gallons per day, which is 110 gallons per day per bedroom, which is Title V design flow rate for a septic system per bedroom. And that is the number that DEP uses, so there's a little background for some of the other Board members. That is, as the state regulation indicates quite clearly, that is a maximum day figure. So when they design septic systems, they want to design a septic system for the worst day in a year, maximum day. Your limitations are average daily flow, two very different figures. So where, you know, when we tell you that's an 11,000 gallon per day connection up here, that's not really accurate. It's half of that, and what we provided to you is some actual data that I think you'll find useful. We went through, we don't meter sewer discharges from homes, we meter water connections, right? So you consume a gallon of water, usually ends up in the sewer if you're consuming it in the house. If you're consuming it in your yard, it does not end up in the sewer. So we took a look at Hickory Hills. Hickory Hills is the adjacent development, it's been under construction, it's just about done now. All four bedroom homes, newer homes, they all, in theory, according to the state, would discharge 440 gallons per day per house, which is absolutely not what's happening. So what we did is we wrote down for several-year period what their actual water consumption was, and we looked at it by quarter. That's how you bill, you bill by quarter. And it's important to consider the quarterly numbers, because Q2 and Q3 are spring and summer. Those are the times when people do use a lot of outside water. So you can't really look at a Q2 and Q3 water consumption and say that's a sewer discharge. That's a combination of sewer discharge and yard consumption. A better figure to look at is Q1 and Q4 than wintertime, because nobody's using water outside in wintertime. So when we look at these homes, this is the sampling of the homes in Hickory Hills, you'll see that in Q1 and Q4, the average is 30 gallons per day per bedroom, which is 25% of the Title V design flow rates. Those are real figures. If you look at the summer, you can see how it goes up, but that is because, as you can see here, 26 Pearl, they jumped to 142. They obviously have a sprinkler system, 18 Pearl has a sprinkler system, 5 Pearl has a sprinkler, and Debra has a sprinkler. You know, there's more than a half a dozen homes here that have sprinkler systems, and they skew the figures in the summer months. So this, this is a real number. This is the kind of flow that you're actually seeing from homes on average in your community. It's nowhere near 440, so this is 30 per bedroom, so times four, that's 120, as compared to 440. And the reason for that is a lot of homes have a lot of bedrooms, but not a lot of people in them. You know, a lot of families have one child, or two children, sometimes no children, you know, and there's only two or three people in a home that has four bedrooms. And when you average that out, you get much, much smaller flow rates. We looked at Acorn Place, Acorn Place is a little bit different because it's condos. These are two-bedroom units. So here you have really a smaller number of people, this is an over-55, so it's really one or two people in these units, but they all have two bedrooms. And when you look at the Q1, Q4 averages, it's 40, slightly higher, which makes sense because it's a smaller home, it's going to contain a minimum number of people regardless of the size of the home. When you have fewer designed bedrooms, you end up with slightly higher average flow rates, but still, a third, a third of the figures that, you know, are used to estimate these connections, because the connection estimates are not average-day calculations, they're maximum-day calculations. So this Acorn Place project, what the applicant would like to do is they would add, like to add another phase of 16 more units to the development. And, you know, if you look at what we were originally permitted for, which was 11,000 gallons per day, and you look at what we're actually discharging, which is a third of that, let's just say a half, to be conservative, we're only discharging 5,500 gallons per day from Acorn Place when it's fully built out. And we can add these 16 units into this project and still not be above 11,000 gallons per day. So we would not increase the discharge from this site beyond what you're already carrying in the books and what you've already approved us for, essentially. So this is a different situation, different project, but it does provide, I think, a lot of really useful information as you contemplate your sewer issues, because, you know, the town's, to a certain extent, here, stuck in the mud, and so, until you guys figure out how you're going to move forward with this, you do have, just to kind of make the picture, you know, you're allowed to discharge 620,000 gallons per day on average. On a max day, you're allowed to discharge 1.2, 1.3 million gallons per day. And on average now, I forget the numbers, you're discharging something like 380,000 or 390,000 gallons per day compared to 620. So the problem that you have is a paperback log. You have a bunch of projects that are using these really unrealistic flow figures, and when you add them all up, it looks like you have a problem, and, you know, the reality is that physically speaking, you're not discharging anywhere near what you're allowed to discharge. So, you know, I'm hoping that, and I would love to be involved in those discussions, I'm hoping that we can find a way forward to allow some of these projects to move forward, because right now, the reason why, you know, the town decided to allow more sewer connections and expansions is because, you know, the ratepayers who are connected to sewer now are paying for that entire $625,000 gallons per day per year. And, you know, the more people that can reasonably connect, the better it is on all the people who are already connected. And you certainly, in my view, you have at least 100,000 gallons per day of extra capacity, probably closer to 150,000 gallons per day of real extra capacity. So I'd hate to see some of these projects that are a nice opportunity, like, you know, redeveloping the downtown, developing the downtown, bringing more bodies to the downtown to support local businesses, and a project like this, which is good for the over-55 community, I'd hate to see these opportunities get passed by.
Thank you. I think, like the previous one, Mr. McKay, we need to get actual facts. I hear what is seen here on the graphs, yes, they're making a lot of sense, but we need the information that you have, and we need to be clear on what our options are at that point. So I think it's very likely we can do that by our next meeting, at least to have the information, and to review it with the Board, and then we'll decide how to proceed from that point on. But I need that information, I think Board members deserve to have that information before we go in further.
Sure. Mr. Schultz?
Jim, the piece that, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Jim, I'd be interested in knowing the exposure we have with Charles River Treatment Plant, if we go over our number, and how, and that's where it comes down to, and Peter said we care about both, but if there's a legal requirement that we don't exceed a certain amount, how, and my assumption is, they either fine us, charge us, or do something if we exceed that, how are they basing it? The one where we're at 60% of the capacity, or the one on paper, we're at 101% of capacity, because it makes a huge difference on how I feel about this, because I'm not going to knowingly vote for any project that puts us, well, this could be very hard to vote for any project that knowingly puts us in violation of their policy. But I don't know what their policy is. I don't know if it's based on the paper number of, that we're in excess of already, or on the actual number where we are below that. So if I look at financial, I think it'll report at our next meeting.
Yeah, Mr. Schultz, if I can, I think that's an excellent point. It's something that we have, and I have to be honest, Mr. McKay has gone through this with us before, and I think it's good for him to maybe prepare to discuss it again. There are a number of options in this. The most important one, and I've been sitting in on some of their meetings, is keeping them informed of what we're doing and why we're doing it, and what the implications are. We know all those things, and we make some decisions, at least it's understood why, but there are a lot of details that go into this decision, and you are absolutely correct. We need to have that absolutely clear, not just for ourselves in this committee, but for everyone in town who's interested in what the implications are to the town.
Yeah, because quite honestly, changes how you approach it. I mean, if we really do have to worry about that, that number that we're already in violation of, then it's incumbent on us to get every home possible connected to the sewer, because that does drive our number down. But if it's the lower number, then it allows for development. So it's nothing about either of these two projects, per se, it's, this is my second important meeting, by the way, Dan. It's all these, yeah, it's all these projects coming forward regardless of how good they are, and the merits to any of them, it's just, I just don't know what violates the law. I guess I can't.
Right, understood. And you have a written agreement with the Charles River Pollution Control District, and it's my understanding that you're not in violation of that agreement until you actually discharge more than an average of 624,000 gallons per day. Whatever that number is, I'm not sure what that number is in that territory.
And we'll note that, I want to hear my DPW to say that.
Understood, understood. You have an agreement, so that's something that you can look at and read.
We will be getting all that detail, and Mr. McKay has been great in getting us that detail in the past. There are issues with respect to not just what we physically discharge, but what we have commitments to and what reserve we have to have. There are a variety of issues that have to be dealt with here. So this isn't the time to do it, we don't have the information from us. Perhaps the next meeting we'll be able to get all out on the table.
And that's what I wanted to mention, and I really think if we can get that at first, the next meeting, one fell swoop, it puts us way ahead of the game. I'm not saying we're going to vote on anything, but at least we can then get, we're going to be missing one group.
Absolutely, absolutely. Is that fair for you, Mr. McKay?
I don't want to, no, we can get that information. I did review Dan's, you know, spreadsheet. I will ask the treasure collector to take a look at it, I mean, she's very good at that stuff, she can look at it and compare with the assistant treasure collector. We can compare those numbers, they're accurate, I know they are, because they came right from what I supplied Dan with. We can, you know, there is a, the biggest thing that Charles River is, they'll tell you, you keep going, but the minute you go over that 600,000, so the more you keep giving, the more you keep giving, you know, someday, you will hit that, you'll hit that number. You know, we will go over that amount, and if we're not prepared for it, and they just can't accept it. They told us that, you know, Mr. Jermaine and Kathy, remember, when they came to the last meeting?
Yeah.
To the Board, and their executive Board members were there, they just, you know, they like, you know, the II that we're removing from the system, you know, that does calculate, you know, helped go a long way. But on paper, like Mr. Schultz just said, we are at 101%. And that 1%, and that stuff that's been promised, and, you know, the Board's already approved. So we can, you know, I'm sure we can set something up with, you know, the two chairs of, you know, the Enterprise Committee, the Chairman of this committee and the town administrator, we can, you know, sit down and have a discussion, you know, with Charles River before, so we can report back to the Board and get you accurate information from them before your next meeting.
Thank you. Okay, so our plan then is, let's get prepared for our next meeting, so we can get it all out on the table, and then we can decide how we're going to move forward, whether we take the vote or not at that time. I can't promise, but at least we'll know how we're moving forward. Okay. With that, I'm now going to move on to the next item, which, again, is Mr. Merrick.
Last time, I promise.
And this is land disturbance, a previously approved land disturbance permit.
So, Mr. Chairman, yes, Ms. McInnes had her hand up, I don't know if you want to...
Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. McInnes, did I miss your hand?
No, I'm all done, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Sorry. So this is a land disturbance permit that was issued in 2018 for Lot 8 in South End Farm. Basically, what we've done is we've reconfigured the lot. The owner of Lot 8, Lot 8 kind of was this long, skinny lot here, and the owner of Lot 8 acquired the property at 351 Orchard Street, which is Ann Rich's former home, and she had this big piece of backland. So he carved off her house as a separate lot, and he basically took all this extra land and tacked it onto his lot, and that gives him an opportunity to move the house back a little further and to have more space and more privacy. What we're asking for is to approve the modification of the plan. We're following the same rules that we had before, we have 30% of the lot being left as a natural preservation area. This is a much larger area now, because the lot size grew from about two acres to about five and change. So this natural preservation area increased by more than two times, and that's it, we're just looking to do that. The septic design has been approved by the Board of Health, so we're looking to substitute the plans.
How about the planning board, what have they got to say about this?
It's not, that's, the subdivision approval process is over, so now it's the Board of Health for the septic system, and you guys for the individual lots.
Even with the purchase of the land, the change, or the configuration?
Well, we went before the planning board to reconfigure this lot, and that's been done, that's been done.
Okay. I'll open it to the Board for discussion. Hearing none, I will open it to the community at large. Well, ask the Board whether we want to take a vote on this particular issue. Mr. Schultz, what's your thought?
Again, second meeting, but I think that, I don't see a reason we can't take a vote on it. Is the vote to just accept the new design, the land disturbance, is that what we're looking to do?
Yeah, all we need is a vote for the Board to accept the revised plan dated 5/12/2020.
Ms. Underhill?
I have one quick question, because we see a lot of these kinds of things. Is this the one that we had discussed before with the super-long driveway? Is this the same one, or is that a different one?
It's a different one.
Okay, all right, I'm good.
Oh, yes, no, that's across the street, that's across the street. This is part of South End Farm, that's not.
Okay, I was going to say, you're going to make that driveway longer? My goodness!
South End Farm has a whole drainage system that was built for the subdivision.
They're building a new, pressway.
A different animal.
Okay. All right, then I'll move that we approve the request, hold on, that we approve the revised plan as a modification under the original permit for 4 Frontier Lane, formerly 2 Frontier Lane, for a land disturbance permit.
Second. The move was seconded to approve the request for the change in the Lot 8, South End Farm, previously approved, was 2.08 acres on 351 Orchard Street, and with the addition of additional land, which is now a backland configured, I can't keep track of all this, 5.49 acres for the movement of the building on that lot. I'll poll the Board, Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Mr. Jermaine, yes, it's approved unanimously by the Board.
Thank you for your time this evening, I appreciate it.
I appreciate it, thank you. Okay. I think we have Mr. McKay back on with us this evening to discuss the annual paving bill.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And somebody drove over that wishing bridge and made a wish when we put this bid out. Actually, the amounts came back far lower than we ever expected. One brief bid, last year we paid 100... Last year, we paid $110 per ton for top coat. This year, the bid came in at $76.50.
Far lower.
That's significant. So what I would ask, that you allow the town administrator to enter into a contract, and I'll break it down when we get into it, to T. Miozy Inc. of 75 Airport Road, Coventry, Rhode Island, in the amount of $487,199.60. What that includes in that, I think I gave you that breakdown. Job one is Farm Street, and that would be from Village Street to Elm Road. Well, the town administrator myself had some conversations with the DPW director and the town administrator of Medway, and it was the discussion of who owns Farm Street, you know, this section of Farm Street from Village Street all the way up to, I think it was Brandywine. And it did come out that they own that. And luckily, they milled that yesterday, today, and they're going to pave all that up to Brandywine. So our funds has dropped, I mean, on Farm Street, we had down 4,800 feet. I don't know the exact amount of how many feet were taken off of that. But what we will do is we'll assess that on the other end of Farm Street, because the bid went out, and you have to stay within, you know, the limits. And we will still pave 4,800 feet. If you remember when Mr. Fox did his development at Hickory Hill, he brought the sewer extension out and gas and everything came up. Water main all came up Farm Street. So we would like to, we'll extend that from that connection right there, that joint all the way down to almost, I can't think of the name of the street, I'm sorry. Anyways, down to Farm Street, all the way down Farm to Elm Road, into that, almost to that intersection. And that will take care of that. The second job, there's two parts of Main Street. One is in front of the fire station from Plain Street to Park Road. In the other intersection, with the school project, they did their intersection, where they put the new street light in. And that would be from Park Road almost to Exchange Street. Job three is Exchange, Ridge Street, the big one. We'd be able to do from almost, we're going to get a quote to see if, because the prices came in so low, and it would still be in this amount. We're going to try to go from Main Street all the way to Union Street. That's significant pave. That's probably one of the longer ones I've ever done here. The last one is Exchange Street, and that it would be from Curve Street, the intersection of Curve, all the way to Main Street. That's in front of all the restaurants. We'd like to do a little bit of work on some of the sidewalks there. We'll do that with the DPW. We'll take care of filling in where all the trees used to be, just to try to spruce up those sidewalks. They're, you know, in good need of repair. Also in this contract, which would still have to be approved by the permanent building committee, but it is part of the, it doesn't mean, if you're approving this, it doesn't mean that they have to approve it. They may look at it and say that, you know, they want to go a different way. But we felt it was best to make this part of the annual bid project, to do the parking lot at the DPW project. And that came in at $85,503. And that was significantly less than we even anticipated. And that's just a fine grading all the way up to the binder coat. We're very pleased with that amount. So that comes up to $487,199.60. And in that, there's police details, $20,000 for line painting, and a contingency, a 10% contingency, which I can show you. That right alone would be a savings, you know, right across the board. We've never gone over it, but, you know, now that I just jinxed myself. But we did carry a 10% contingency in there. So if those funds are not used, they just get rolled over till next year. Now, that still leaves us with, because we thought we're going to need some, when we put this list together, we thought we were going to need Exchange Street. That still leaves the town meeting appropriation of $143,805.23. We have not, we're going to have to put that out to bid. We still have plenty of time to do that. We just can't just add on to this bid, because it would go over. If we added $143,805, that would go way over, you know, what the state regulations, procurement laws would allow us to do that. And we didn't name any of the streets in the actual bid process. But we will put that out to bid. If you remember back when we were talking about this appropriation, there was many intersections that we could use this funds for. We would look at fixing Exchange Street with the Toll Brothers project. They only did half the road where they put the sewer main down when they changed the force main. We would, you know, button that up, you know, and do the other, both sides of Exchange Street. And that would go from the, almost from Orchard Street all the way down to Island Road. And that could take a good chunk of that money up. We would definitely look at doing the intersection of Village Street and Pleasant Street all the way down to, you know, that big intersection right there. So, but that, we'll put that out to bid, and we'll come back and get approval for that at another time. So it's pretty exciting, you know, to get this much done on these five jobs. And there will be, we know that there'll be a surplus left over to help add on into, you know, next year's paving projects.
Well, thank you very much. These are, this is very good news. This, I think, is the largest amount of paving we've been able to do, at least since I've been in this town. It's going to clean up a very substantial portion of some very core roads. So this is absolutely terrific. As they say, don't look a gift horse, and I don't intend to at this point. So we'll look forward to getting the rest of the bids in from you. So thank you very much. Is there anything you need us to do at this point, Mr. McKay?
Yes, to award the contract, allow the town administrator to sign the contract with T. Miozy for the 487,199.60.
I'll take a motion on that. Unless there are comments?
No. Go ahead, Karen.
Okay. I move that we authorize the town administrator to enter into a contract with T. Miozy Incorporated of Coventry, Rhode Island, for the fiscal year '22 paving contract in the amount of $487,199.60.
Second. So move and seconded to allow the town administrator to sign a contract to enter into for paving the roads, as identified in the five jobs, with T. Miozy Incorporated of 75 Airport Road in Coventry, Rhode Island, in the amount of $487,199.60. I'll poll the board, Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Mr. Jermaine, yes, approved unanimously. And again, thank you very much for your efforts.
Thank you.
Good news.
Good night.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is a presentation on the Charter Review Committee and what they found as a result of the review they've conducted over the last year. So I'm going to ask, I believe it's Mr. Safire, Chief Safire, to join us.
Yes, sir, thank you. I'm here this evening now as President, Chris Safire, of the Town Milis. So we did a brief overview of our findings a couple months ago. This is a little bit more detailed. And Karen, are you going to, are you going to scroll through this?
All right, I can if you'd like me to.
Because you want me to share my screen?
It's totally up to you, whatever's easier for you, sir.
Yeah, no, I'm good. So.
Just yell if you need me to advance it.
Yeah, if you could skip ahead the process. I think it's slide three.
Oh, sorry. This, my idea?
Yep. So our committee reviewed various charters in other neighboring communities. We interviewed key people within the Town Milis, select board members, town clerk, town moderator, town council, and the town administrator. And we formulated and discussed all these issues as a committee. And, next one, please. And the issues, the listed issues, they were all unanimous in the end. We did debate, we were, I think it was four to, four, four to oppose to increasing the board size, but we circled back and revisited the select board size. And we ended up unanimous in regards to the select board. So ultimately, all of these recommendations were voted unanimously by the committee. Next slide. The first one, the first issue that we handled was the size of the select board. Currently, we have a three-member board, and we'd like to increase it to five. It helps you guys evenly disperse your workload, offers a greater efficiency, and opportunity for offline discussions. As it currently is right now, you folks can't speak to one another outside of the meeting, or it would be a violation of open meeting. So having five members would allow for that to happen. Select board accessibility for residents. If there were five, it's probably a greater opportunity for residents to be able to connect with the members of the select board as opposed to the three. I know everybody has full-time jobs, and having a couple more individuals on the board would certainly allow for the accessibility to the residents of Milis. Also, the select board members currently sit on various committees within the community. And for three people to handle that is certainly a substantial undertaking. So if we had five, it would definitely lighten the workload on you guys. Any questions in regards to the size of the select board? All right. Recommendations for town clerk. We recommend the town clerk be an appointed position. Basically, for the simple reason, the accountability to the residents. We did review the study that the town conducted, I think it was two years ago, that the study was conducted, or thereabouts. And we agree with the recommendations that were made within that study. Next one. Town moderator. Currently, we have a town moderator position as one year. We'd like to have you folks consider moving it to three years. It would allow for greater continuity within the position, for the position. You know, one year, you get two shots, basically, at being town moderator. And it's not an easy job. I wouldn't imagine it to be an easy job. So having that time to get meetings under your belt might be more beneficial for the moderator to do a great job. In addition, the suggestion came up to allow for a deputy moderator in the event something happens to our moderator, whether they're sick, they're out injured and they can't make it, that the town has the ability to appoint a deputy moderator so that a town meeting can continue and you don't have to cancel it. Next. And one of the other recommendations was to rename the finance committee to the warrant committee. It would be consistent with other communities, and the finance committee agreed. I think the name, Finance Committee, and Mr. Schultz, just correct me if I'm wrong, because I don't want to leave any important parts of this out. But basically, what it came down to was Finance Committee, yeah, the Finance Committee definitely deals with the budgets, but they certainly deal with warrants. It's a significant amount of their job. Mr. Schultz?
Yeah, that's a fair assessment. I think that, and having served on the Finance Committee for far too long, I think the problem maybe is recruiting people who didn't think they had financial, thought they needed a finance background to serve on the Finance Committee. While that's certainly helpful, it's only probably about a third of the job. The rest of the work is zoning articles, all the articles the select board puts forward. Finance is a piece of it, sure, but the other, I think more than half, probably two-thirds of it, is working on making recommendations on everything on the warrant. A lot of those don't relate to finance directly. So we thought a more inclusive name would not scare good people off who think you need to be a CPA accountant or have a degree in municipal finance to be able to serve on it. All of those things are great to have, but you're absolutely not needed.
Great. Any questions? None. Recommendations for the town administrator job description. That would be Article 3, Section 3-4. Basically, it's the ability for the town and the town administrator to streamline work and free up more time for the board. Mr. Gazinski, would you like to elaborate on Article 3, Section 3-4?
Certainly, Mr. Chairman. I'd be happy to talk about that. I think the focus here is really trying to bring the position into a more progressive state, where many other communities around here have it to allow for better and more streamlined administration. A lot of the processes we go through, that the board is required to go through currently, take additional time of the board, and are more administrative in nature. In many communities, again, I'm speaking in generalities here without getting into the weeds, because there's a lot of aspects to this. But I think we're trying to look at ways to have the board focus more on broad strategic goals and policy issues versus getting kind of bogged down in the minutia. And if you look at a lot of the recommendations, you certainly understand kind of where my thought process is on this. And it's very similar to other communities that I've worked in. And if you look around, communities around here, Medway and several other communities around here have updated how their chief administrative operator really runs the day-to-day business and how that the, I think if the board were to go to three to five members, this would even be more important in order to get some of those tasks done with a larger board. So I'd be happy to answer any questions people have with specifics in this section. But that's the general overview and, you know, my comments were to the committee and, you know, while they were doing their research.
No. Just to parallel, Mr. Gazinski, I think, you know, an example would be tonight, and correct me if I'm wrong, sir, but if we need to do a part-time dispatcher, I would be able to just come to you and have you sign off on that appointment of the part-time dispatcher, correct?
There are aspects in different levels of authority. Certainly, a lot of towns have requirements that, you know, department head level positions and so forth require the select board approval. But maybe a temporary appointment, part-time appointments, those lower-level appointments that the town may want to move forward with in fairly quick manner may be difficult for the town to act on in a timely way. That's one area that I think should be looked at. And there's a lot of other aspects to the day-to-day management that essentially already occurs, but it's not codified anywhere in the town's bylaws. It's more of a, just a general understanding and past practice. This would codify a lot of those different items so that it would be clarified for everyone working in town government as to what the... working in town government as to what the roles and responsibilities were. I think that's a lot of it, is the clarification of the operations and who's responsible for what.
Any questions in regards to the town manager position? No. Tabled issues, we did consult with Mr. Tallerman to clarify several issues. Recall provisions, we did discuss that, but there's no action at this time. And we also discussed conflict of interest. We decided there was no action at this time because we have to abide by the state conflict of interest rules, so we didn't move forward with that either. That sums up the changes. And our charter, in comparison to some other towns, is pretty compact as it is, so our job is pretty easy, just based on the amount of information we had to go through.
Let me say, first of all, thank you for the effort all of you put in. I think it's very important. These are issues that we need to discuss. I think what I'd like to do is if we have discussion this evening, I'm very happy to start that discussion. I'd prefer not to even consider a vote tonight. I think it's important for us to have further discussion on this and give the community, if they have an interest in input at a subsequent meeting, to have them discuss their views on these same issues. Ultimately, it's going to go to the community for votes anyway, but that's my feeling. So if any members of the board would like to make any comments or have discussion on any of these topics this evening, please do so.
Chair?
Yes, Mr. Schultz?
Having served on that committee just prior, I'm no longer a member, so we're not in any open meeting law violations here, but the one item that I've since had a chance to have some further discussions on, I think we need more thought, is the town moderator position. I think it would behoove us to have the current town moderator in to talk about her views on the one versus three-year commitment. We did speak to Erin, we did speak to Jim McCaffrey, the two most recent, but we did not, they're still in town, but we didn't speak to the current town moderator that we have. I think she is more in line of wanting it to be a one-year term than a three-year term, so it might add a little bit of different perspective to how it goes. So I'm not saying that we made the wrong recommendation, but I think that that one is one that is probably, we need to include her thoughts on this.
Why don't we invite her at the next meeting where we are going to discuss these issues? I'm not committing that it will be the next meeting, by the way, only because Ms. Burey informed me today that our next meeting is already beginning to get out of hand, so I apologize. It's not that we want to delay this, but it may not be the very next meeting. I hope you understand that.
And Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Schultz?
I think that the goal would be to have this, I'd like to see the goal to be to have this on the next town meeting warrant for vote, so whatever schedule we have to use to get on that piece, I think is more than adequate. I agree, I don't think it has to be the next meeting, but I think we need to hit the November town meeting.
I fully concur with your suggestion. I think we all would like to see these issues resolved and put to the boarders and discussed at the next town meeting. Ms. Underhill?
Thank you. Just because it's part of my background, the deputy moderator, did the committee speak with Mr. Tallerman about the moderator items as well? Is it, so it's, I'm assuming that it was confirmed that right now, if the actual moderator couldn't be there at all, that the meeting would have to be canceled? So what, who would, where would the deputy moderator come from? Would they be appointed by the moderator? And then, how long is that term? I just have those kinds of questions.
Mr. Schultz, or Mr. Safire, Chief Safire, excuse me. I believe Mr. Tallerman had stated the moderator can appoint a deputy moderator and it would be for the term of whatever the meeting, the day of the meeting.
That meeting?
Yes.
Okay. I didn't know if there was another intent to have somebody as backup, like, assigned for all the time, but, okay.
No, it was, the intent was to have somebody, the moderator make the appointment possibly from the car, stuck in traffic, which is to get somebody so that we can have the meeting and this term is exactly the duration of that meeting.
Okay.
Excellent. Ms. Jermaine?
I was just going to say that we could do it formally, vis-à-vis identifying a candidate and appointing them, or we could do it at the last minute if the moderator was unable. So, and Mr. Tallerman is the moderator in his town, so he said basically you've got either option.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments from the board on any of the issues? I think this looks great. We do need to discuss it in some detail, each one of these issues, so we'll get it on a future agenda as soon as possible. And again, Mr. Safire, Chief Safire and your committee, thank you very much for the effort you put in. It's very, very helpful. These things are issues that have to be addressed by the town, so much appreciated. Thank you. Okay. I'm now going to move on to the open session agenda. The planning board had a request for comment on marijuana cultivation facility special permit for GTE at 480 to 86 Main Street. And I'm going to let Mr. Weiss introduce that, and this is, as I understand it, the discussion item only issue at this point.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. GTE LLC has filed for a special permit and site plan approval as an indoor cannabis-growing facility, and will have its first public hearing on the permit and approval tomorrow evening at the planning board. And the planning board, as you mentioned, Mr. Chairman, asked if any committees or boards have any comments, and I am happy to present those if no one from this board can make it to the meeting. I'm very happy to present it, submit on behalf of the board, to the planning board, any comments that you wish me to convey to the board. I'm also prepared to give a very brief summary of the process that GTE went through in its hearings before this board, you know, mentioning it is a locally-based, Massachusetts-based business in Franklin that we thoroughly vetted, the owners, that the owners are actually minority owners who developed their businesses over two generations in a traditional manner that immigrants in our country have always done. So, you know, we had a positive experience in negotiating the host community agreement with them, so I'm prepared to tell them anything that you wish me to convey to them.
I'll ask the board members if they have any comments or questions.
I do not.
What was the address one last time? It was Main Street, but I missed the number.
I believe it's 1480 and 1486.
Thank you. Yeah, I don't have any questions or comments. I was just curious exactly where they were located.
Mr. Chair?
Are there any comments or questions from the audience?
Mr. Chair, I was just going to add that, you know, the host community, the select board already has signed a host community agreement with GTE, as Bob mentioned, so I think really this is just, unless there was something outstanding, it's really just, you know, taking a vote, something to the nature that they're going to make sure the permit complies with what's already in the host community agreement.
Right. I fully understand that. I just want to make sure that if any board members have any concerns or questions, this is their opportunity to raise those. Hearing none, I think, Mr. Weiss, if you can bring back information to us and let us know what happens, we'd be very appreciative of that.
I'd be happy to do that.
Thank you. Okay. The next item is a formality that we go through every year, which is the annual acceptance of the select board policies and procedures. It's a three-ring binder, as I recall, that we have, that we put together and should be updated annually if we have any new thoughts or anything, but the important thing is that we reviewed it and at least as of this time, if we have anything to add, let's add it, but change, otherwise we can at any time make changes to it. But I just want to make sure that we have done it for this year. Ms. Underhill, do you have any changes or anything you'd agenda, you'd like to add to
I don't believe I have anything at the moment.
That's fine, you're good. At any time, at any meeting, feel free to bring it up. Mr. Schultz?
No, I read it when I was appointed and I didn't see anything that struck me as needing to be a change at that point.
Then, I think we need to have a vote to at least accept the policies as written at this time.
Only a motion that we accept the select board's policy procedure manual as written at this time.
Second.
To move and second it to adopt the policies and procedure manual as written at this time for the select board. I'll poll the board and Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Mr. Jermaine, yes, it's unanimous in acceptance. Thank you.
Thank you. This one could take a few minutes, and this is, discuss the board committee liaison assignments for the upcoming year. Although I haven't seen anything, I did ask that if either of you have any preferences for committees, to please submit them to the town administrator. And so at this point, I am going to ask if the town administrator got any recommendations or requests from any of us so that we can look at everything and decide how we want to handle the board liaisons for the upcoming year. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I actually did, and I'm pulling those up right now. I did receive an email from Erin Underhill stating that she has an interest in the following: cemetery committee, CPC, emergency planning, permanent building committee, and school
Okay. Yeah, and I didn't submit when I was happy with the permanent building committee that I was appointed to last meeting, and other than that, I had no strong preference. I'll serve wherever needed. The only one I really did have preference on was the permanent building committee because I've been involved in the projects since the library.
Well, for obvious reasons, I'm not even going to be submitting my name for that. But let me ask the two of you, since you're both interested in the PBC, I know that Craig, you have a lot of experience in that. You've sat on it for a number of years and so forth. And I have to be very frank, I'm inclined in that direction. The only concern I have, and I'm just raising it in public with everyone, is that Erin will probably take over his chair next year and the exposure could be very useful. I would, I don't like to deny her the opportunity, but I can see good reasons for allowing you or supporting you in moving forward. I'd like the two of you to, while we can, discuss it here and see if we can reach an agreement on it.
Yeah, again, the only reason I was interested in it is because I have worked on it. It's a project I really enjoy working on, the building projects. I think over the years, since 2010, built up some expertise in that committee and in the middle of the DPW project, or hopefully the last third of the DPW project. And then, and then we're in the conceptual phases of the senior, the community center or senior center. So just the experience and time I've put on that, I'd like to see those through, but that's the only reasons I'd be interested in it. Okay.
I do have a question.
Yes, Ms. Underhill.
The next item on the agenda is a PBC working group designate. What is it, is that, is that related somehow or separate from somebody acting as liaison?
Well, since I sent that email, I thought it was a liaison. That came up at the last PBC meeting that I attended, on the select board side, when I was sitting, yeah, the last time. That one is, it's to discuss the senior center, a small working group or community center and a select board, and then the other people as presented would be asked to attend that meeting. One-off, one-time working group to try to get some marching orders for the council on aging building, because we're kind of at a, or the community center council on aging, because we're kind of a standstill at this point with that.
It's, literally, it was, I believe, a one-off, so.
So I can, I can pass on the permanent building committee and leave that to Craig. If I, if working this out, I do need to take on something else, you know, I have no idea what the cable TV advisory committee does, but it sounds interesting. And, Mr. Jermaine, I just, I'm assuming that you're going to take over Mr. McCaffrey's role as the Norfolk County Advisory Board designate, right?
More than likely, I will.
Okay.
Again, I'm not going to, I'm going to be very candid on this. I'm not going to insert myself into any of these without discussing it with the two of you first. These are decisions that we, as a board, should be making, not unilateral decisions. I don't believe in that. I'm happy to do things, but I can assure you, I have enough things I've been doing in town. I'm not looking to try to find more opportunities for myself at this stage, so if there's something you would prefer to do, like the Norfolk County, that's fine. There is something else I'd like to comment on before we make a final decision on these, and that is that it is possible for two of you to attend a meeting, even though one of you is technically the representative, as long as it's declared as a meeting, and I believe Ms. Burey can assist you with posting it. But if you, for example, Erin wanted to attend and Craig was the representative, as far as I'm concerned, you could get in touch with Ms. Burey and say, "I want to attend. Would you please post it as a meeting so that you and Craig could both be there?"
Oh, I see.
I would have no objections. It doesn't have to come to me for any final approval. Is that okay with you, Ms. Burey?
Yes, absolutely. And that is, that is correct, as long as it's the same 48 hours notice, so as long as you know a few days in advance. I would just post it and include the agenda of whatever the committee was that you're going to, so it's, you know, it's just a two-minute thing, it's just a formality.
Okay, great, thank you.
Erin, which ones were you interested in, and the other ones?
So essentially, I would remain the same, except instead of economic development, I was interested in emergency planning.
I would be glad to assume the economic development if you want to move off of that one, unless, Peter, you want the economic development.
Let me go down the committees, if you don't mind. I have on the page, I think I have the same page here, and I'm just going to write in names as we go, and we'll make a decision. So who is it who said they want the local emergency planning committee?
Me.
That's Erin. Okay. Energy committee. I'll continue with that unless somebody specifically wants it. Enterprise funds advisory committee. Now, I'm throwing that up for a very specific reason. I've been doing it. I've been doing it. But Craig, if for some reason you feel you really want to do it, or Erin, I want to know that, and I'm serious.
That is a very informative committee. I learned a lot about it, evidently not enough, because I still have a lot of questions tonight. But I am fine with whichever, whoever wants it. I would continue. Peter, if you want to continue, or Erin, if you want to step on, I think it's a committee where I learned a ton.
Okay. Erin, I'm going to comment to you that it's a very informative committee. The members are very knowledgeable. There's a lot going on, as you can tell. It impacts directly on the development of the community. So I don't believe it's a meeting, what is it, about once a month, or is it every? I don't want to put words in anyone's mouth. It hasn't been too frequent, but if that's something you're at all interested in, let me know. Are you at all interested in doing that?
Yeah, it sounds like it would be a really good learning opportunity for me.
I think it would. Craig, what's your feeling on that?
I'm fine with that.
Is that okay? I think it would be great for Erin to do that. Cable TV Advisory Committee.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I was going to say, Mike can probably speak to this. There isn't a, there is a lot going on for this.
There won't be a lot of work on that one this year. That is usually when our cable licenses are up. There's a lot of meetings for negotiations with, you know, with Comcast and with Verizon. We've just wrapped those up within the past two years, so I don't expect much to happen there for another year or two. But, I mean, we still should have someone appointed there, but it won't be, it won't be heavy lifting over the next year.
Sounds good. Anyone, either of you two, like to do that? Don't get yourselves too heavily committed. With that strong sales pitch, I'm yay. I'll do it for a year or two, and then we'll renegotiate the contract, and a new guy can help.
I was going to say, when the work comes, Craig, we know.
Okay. Capital Planning Committee. I'm going to be honest, I would like this, but I'm going to defer if either of you feels strongly.
I do like the committee, but I'm just coming off the Finance Committee. I would rather take a step back from the capital planning. I think that's an important committee. It's what I'm interested in, but Peter, if you want it, I have no share, and I don't know how you feel about it, but.
I don't feel strongly, so I think that'd be great, Pete, if you're interested.
I am interested. I'm not going to put myself down. Craig, if you decide you really want it, I will defer to you, but at the moment...
I think what I would like to do is attend a few meetings, so I'll take you up on that offer of posting, if we both attend.
You do that.
My design, see what's going on without the commitment that's required for the time commitment, because I know they do a lot of heavy lifting.
I will try to make sure that when I find out you're holding a meeting, that we post ourselves. And Karen, if you would assist me in that, and Craig, feel free to make sure so that he can attend.
I actually have a quick question on that. Is this only, so I could listen in to any committee meeting if I don't speak? It's if I'm going to speak, then we'd have to have posted a meeting, correct?
Technically, it's correct.
Okay.
We have to be very careful, because there can be perception, so if you're, if you're sitting in the meeting, you want to sit in the back of the room, out of the way, kind of thing, so that it's clear you're not really participating. Am I fair in saying that, either Ms. Burey or Mr. Buzinski?
Yes, I would say that's fair. I mean, if, you know, technically, you know, the whole board theoretically could go to, like, if, say, the board, the Select Board would like to go to a Plaine Board meeting, and you just want to just listen, that's totally fine. Or if you want to ask a question as a resident, you just cannot interact with each other about any town-related issues. And you certainly don't want to relay anything at the meeting that would say how would you, if, if the board had to take action on anything before the Plaine Board, you want to be careful not to relay any of that, with how you vote or what you do in regards to that.
Right.
So you can be there just as an observer, that's fine, but you'd have to make sure not to interact with each other about any town business.
Or since you're all residents, you can go and say, "I'm acting as a resident, and I'm speaking on behalf of a resident."
Correct. We usually, we usually ask that you...
Don't, don't sit together, whatever you want.
Yeah, we usually ask that they be posted if there's a probability or a high possibility of that occurring. But if it's a random encounter, and two members happen to show up at a meeting that they each had an interest in, you don't have to send someone home. You just have to make sure not to talk to each other about anything involving any town business.
Thank you. I think we'll stick with, let's try to get ourselves posted if we're going, but if you can't, at least we have a way of continuing.
Yes.
Norfolk County Advisory Board designate. Erin, were you saying you were interested in that?
Um...
I don't remember.
Well, I feel like I'm, in my mind, was fairly committed to a list that I had. If you don't want to, then I'd be happy to step into it, but I'll probably need to relinquish other things.
I think you're over, you're getting overcommitted. Craig, are you at all interested in that?
I don't know, I don't know what that one does, to be honest.
Yeah. I'm trying to think of the specifics.
I know Jim had said he sat in on very, very long meetings.
Yeah.
But I don't know how frequent they were.
They weren't frequent.
I think they're fairly infrequent, actually. Mike, correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think there's, there's only a couple here and there.
Yeah, I think they meet basically almost quarterly. It's not, it's not...
Right, it's not a monthly.
But the meetings can be long, but they're not, they're not meeting often.
And what do they do, Mike? Do you know?
Really, they're, are we talking about the Norfolk County Advisory Committee?
Yeah.
Yeah, really, they, they talk about the issues having to do with everything going on with the county, the county's budget. They get feedback. The board doesn't have any, doesn't have many formal powers, but, but, you know, when they, when they express opinion on something, it carries heavily with the county commissioners. So they really discuss the issues and try to get consensus on county-wide issues in the county services and administration. I've been, I was told by former Select Board member McCaffrey that they can be lively meetings.
A little contentious.
But interesting. But lengthy, but, but they also, there are not a ton of it. So it's not like a monthly requirement. It's probably three times a year, sort of thing. Just out of curiosity, are they day meetings, evening meetings? Because I started a new job on April 14th or 15th, and I've got to be...
I think they're evening.
Well, it looks like I found one, from 2017.
I think there's evening meetings.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's there. As long as it's evening, I can do it. I just can't take a whole lot of days off during my first six months on a job.
And I think it's more, you're just kind of going to absorb the information and really participate much, unless there was something really specific they were talking about.
Yeah, I do hear they're quite educational about what's going on in the region, and you hear from a lot of area communities. I wouldn't, I wouldn't, as long as I didn't have to take a full day off work to attend the meetings, at least for this first six-month period.
No, I can't imagine.
I believe it's the evenings.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, Kathy McKinnis?
Yes, Ms. McKinnis.
I had the pleasure of representing Millis for two years, and what I would suggest, Mr. Chair, is that if you could convince Robert Weiss to attend, many of them don't have, they're not all on the board of Select Board. Many have town managers, you know, you wouldn't put that on our town manager, but, you know, I think he might be, and it's, it's usually held at the tri, no, the Aggie, the Norfolk Aggie. They prepare a nice kind of a school lunch meal that's, the gals come in and, you know, you throw like five or $10 into the kitty. And then while you're eating, you will hear from the registrar dees or the sheriff. But, you know, in all honesty, they don't give a care about what Millis thinks. It's Braintree and Quincy and those towns, Norwood, that, you know, we're just like, "Hey, Millis." But they always say, "Jeez, the private house prices are going up in your town on a regular basis." So, you know, rather than, you know, my own personal opinion, after being on it for two years, would be to maybe ask Mr. Weiss before one of you takes it on. Thank you.
Okay. Yeah, I think that what Kathy says, I'll be glad to attend if we needed to be a Select Board person, but I'll certainly go to one meeting, because I think it would be informative. But if you want to bring it up, Bob, if you want to come along as my plus-one, or if I come as your plus-one, we can figure that out.
Yeah, I think, maybe what we'll do is, we'll talk with Bob about it. I think, Mike, we ought to discuss that. And then, for the interim, how about Craig, you take it for at least one meeting, and then maybe I'll take it. I'm just kind of interested, but based on what Kathy said, I'm not so sure. It's the top of my list right now. She had me at the free dinner. Okay. The PBC, I think based on what I just heard, Craig, I'll defer to you in terms of, you've had the experience, you have ongoing experience, but I would ask that... Hello? Kathy, you're... You've got a mute, Kathy. But in terms of Erin participating, I would ask that if you can allow her to participate also, would that be appropriate?
We'll post the meeting if you both felt you choose to.
I'm sorry, I didn't...
We'll post the meeting if you both...
Yeah, that's fine.
That's fine. Okay. So, but you'll be our official representative if you will. Town Meeting Study Committee.
Mr. Chair, on this particular committee, I'm not quite sure where that all stands. It sort of is defunct, I think. However, I shouldn't say it's defunct. It's not appointed by the Select Board. You don't, and even the, you can choose a liaison, but the town meeting study is actually appointed by the moderator, which is interesting.
Interesting.
So I guess the liaison is still appointed by you as a one-year. But I honestly, I'm not quite sure where that whole thing stands, so you may want to just...
I don't think we've met. I was appointed to it, not on the committee, and I don't think we've met in quite a while.
Right, is that, I don't know if that's even still kind of happening.
In the way it's, I'll tell you what. I'll appoint myself as the liaison if it ever becomes operational.
Okay.
How's that?
That sounds good.
Is that okay with the two of you?
Yes.
And it's going to be a heavy-duty committee, I can tell you.
I mean, I think, I think the committee kind of did serve out its purpose. I don't think they really issued a final report to the town, but it was really just to look at functions of town meeting, because we don't define a lot in our bylaws to control that. It's really up to the moderator's discretion. So the purpose of that committee was really to talk about different things that might make town meeting run smoother.
Sure. Okay, Cemetery Committee.
I would like to keep Cemetery.
You got it. Community, is that okay with you, Craig?
Aye.
Okay. CPC.
So I might be interested, I could be convinced to continue with it, but I did take on the school committee meetings, which I have not admittedly gone in person, but I've listened in to all the school committee meetings, and I know this isn't on our spreadsheet. So my first question is, can we add it? And then, second, I could stay on CPC and perhaps do that, unless Craig would like to go to CPC.
Erin, I would take either CPC or Economic Development with no issue, unless you need me to take both, in which case I would, with moderate issue, take both.
Okay, so the CPC or voting member?
Yeah, I have strong views on both of those two committees, so I would be, I, I really do like either of them. I'd be thrilled to sit on either of those two committees. Maybe not both, depending on the, how things are spread out, but, but either one, whichever one you're not interested in, Erin, I'll be glad to, or less interested in, I'll be glad to take.
Well, Erin, the choice is yours, it sounds like, so.
So I have three right now.
Really?
Yeah, I guess I'll keep CPC then, and Craig could do Economic Development.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, just through the chair, I guess, Erin, did you ever, did the, did the school committee vote to accept a Select Board liaison at any point? Because that needs to happen, right, before you can...
That needs to happen.
Okay, so they didn't vote, but I heard back from the chair at the time, who said that in their charter or whatnot for the committee, that it does mention a Select Board liaison. So, like I said, I haven't been attending in person or speaking to anything, but I've been following all the meetings.
So let's put you in for school, if that's okay. Craig, if you decide you want to attend, please just add yourself as an open, to make it an open meeting, so we can do so, okay?
I, the only one might be with a budget to present it, but beyond that, Erin, have at it.
Okay. Well, that's great. I don't have many myself. You two seem to have taken most of them. I can't tell you how upset I am over this.
I can give you something if you'd like.
We'll stick to this, Mr. Jermaine.
Oh, no, I'm just going to cry for a while. I think I can handle this. I'm going to look forward to a little less time on some issues. Okay. So that gets us with the liaison, and then we have to designate, okay, the working group, so that's, that one's been done. Now, how about, and...
Well, Pete, Pete, I'm sorry, you have to actually vote if you're going to, are you going to do that next meeting? Are you going to vote that these are the assignments?
Okay, let's...
Assignments? Because really, these would be your FY22 assignments. These would all going to affect a lot of...
These are all FY22.
Except that, right now, there's a vacancy, because obviously, Mr. McCaffrey has gone on some of these. So you could vote that this is effective now through the end of FY22? There would probably be a...
The FY22, except where there's a vacancy, and then the person designated for FY22 will fill that vacancy.
There you go. But you do need to make the formal vote.
Okay. Let me hear a motion?
A motion, sorry, yes.
I'll tell you what. You, have you got them all written down? I've got them here. Let me move that the committee assignments, as we listed them, are as follows. For FY22, and that is Erin will have Local Emergency Planning, Pete will have Energy Committee, Erin will have Enterprise Funds, Craig will have Cable TV, Pete will have Capital Planning, Craig will have Norfolk Advisory, and will cover it this year if they do have a meeting in the next couple of weeks. Permanent Building Committee will be handled by Craig. Town Meeting Study Committee, well, I got the heavies, will be handled by me. Cemetery Committee by Erin. Community Preservation Committee by Erin. And Economic Development Committee by Craig. Do I hear a second? Second. Moved and seconded, I'll take the roll call. Erin?
Yes.
Craig? Yes. Pete? Yes. Okay, so does that give us the formal vote that we need? Excellent.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Do we need to add an amendment to work on, including the school committee in our list?
You were, you beat me to it, so please go and add that. The reason I didn't include it is it's not a formal setup yet. So I think it's important to say that you will attend, and when they make it formal, you'll also become the formal representative.
Okay. And Karen, if you could just advise me after the fact on how I, what I'm supposed to do there.
We will do that.
So, you want to make a motion?
Oh, in my, oh, okay, yes. So I move, I move that I cover the school committee if I'm officially added as a liaison, otherwise I will keep listening to their meetings.
Mr. Schultz?
I'm fine.
Second.
So you will become the formal... So you will become the formal, the formal liaison when that happens?
When it's more, and one other question, second on that one, but the Finance Committee is going to be the rotating base as we did before.
Oh, that's a good one.
Yeah, the, I have a list of other committees here, and I was going to go down at next, so why don't we, I can put one on the School Committee, and we'll decide on the other ones. Yeah, so let's do the.
Actually, oh, okay.
I'll take, I'll poll the board. Erin?
Yes.
Craig?
Yes.
Pete? Yes.
And then, Mr. Chair, for all of the other boards and committees, on June 21st, I will have the list of all of the motions that you need to make to reappoint people.
That's perfect.
I would think at that point, if you wanted to look at other committees and debatable adding liaisons, I would caution that you're probably already going to have your plates pretty full here. Um, well, we can certainly do that then.
I think that we'll, we will, but I want to make clear that having a little experience on the Finance Committee myself, I think I do want to see that we have somebody appointed to attend those meetings.
Okay, so I can add that to the list for, when you read through the entire big list, if that makes sense.
Excellent. If you need to coordinate with the Chair, I think it's Peter Verube, please feel free to do so.
I will do that.
Okay. Do each of you have that list? Well, you're going to give us the new list, aren't you?
I'm going to give you a whole list, right.
Okay, I have the old list here. So glad we're not going through that tonight. That is a bit of a time consumer.
Yes. And that is on the 21st, which is one of the things I was cautioning you about being a, a longer meeting.
Yes. Well, we seem to be approaching that long.
And Mr. Chair, um, just for food for thought, I need to take myself out of the equation for potential Finance Committee liaison.
Yes, yes.
Because two of us can't be in the same place at the same time.
That is correct. Okay. I guess the next thing we want to do is deal with the acceptance of the local option for remote participation for boards and committees.
I think you missed.
Let me.
Did you miss the working group?
I'm sorry.
I'm s, I think you missed designating working group representative for the PBC. Did we skip that?
I thought we had that with Craig already. We did that.
No, this is.
No, this is different. Go ahead, Craig, sorry.
Yeah, but, um, at the last PBC meeting, we were discussing the Council on Aging, uh, Senior Center, Community Center, the, the new building project that we're looking to try to get some guidance around. And we have been meeting with the Council on Aging pretty heavily at the PBC, but the more we talk about it, we think it needs to be a broader, um, group to include the Rec Director, the Rec, the Library, and the Council on Aging. So we're asking for the selectmen to, um, ask, um, the Rec Director and a board member from the Rec Department, the Library Director and a, uh, Library Board Member, um, to attend a meeting, and Council on Aging, the Council on Aging Board Member, to attend a working group meeting, um, with two PBC members. It'll be Jim and somebody named Diane, I think it's Jermaine, um, and, uh, and myself. We'd attend that meeting. It's basically just to hash out ideas around what we would like this community-wide asset to look like, because right now most of our answer has been quite senior-focused. Um, and Erin, we can post this as an open meeting if you'd like to attend it as well. But the idea was to try to keep it as a small working group that wasn't, um, as formal as an official meeting, but give us a chance to work through some of these ideas and have some open, frank discussions about.
I would actually really like to also attend if we can post a meeting.
Yeah, and that may make it difficult because the idea was to keep it more of a working session.
Okay.
But I, I understand what you're saying. Um, but it would be to appoint this group to have this, uh, discussion about what this could possibly look like.
Well, I have no problem with the concept of appointing the group. I would, I understand what you're trying to say, Craig. If, um, Erin can attend, I'd be appreciative, but I understand where you're coming from. So please think about that and perhaps talk it over with Mr. Clacco and see if something can be worked out. But otherwise, I think the idea is a very good idea. We need to get some closure on this, but we need to also get a larger participation in what we have, so.
And this is a precursor to the, um, if you recall back when we did the school, we had community-wide resource meetings where we discussed what we'd like to see, but we didn't go into those with just blank pieces of paper. We went in there with some possible ideas to rate, discuss, and everything else. And now that COVID's over and we have the ability to come into face-to-face meetings again, that would be the outcome of this. There's not going to be thing, I mean, out of this meeting beyond just the framework with which we go forward to the community, to discuss, to try to lay some ideas together, um, work with our consultants on that, and, uh, and come back to the PBC with some ideas on, along those lines. So we can have those, those community-wise brainstorming, planning, and evaluation meetings.
Okay.
I think that what we're asking is for the Select Board to request that, you know, the, the Rec and Library, um, and COA, um, attend this meeting, and possibly that Karen work with Wayne to schedule said meeting.
Okay. Um, I see that, and I have, I understand what you're after. I concur with it. I will say one more time, I have no problem if, Erin, you get it posted, that you can attend. Craig, I would ask to be receptive to that is all.
Yeah, absolutely. I, yeah.
So that, I think she has things to offer. I think it's important. But no, I go along with this. So if I can hear, do we need to take a motion on this, Karen or Mr. Gazinski?
I think if it's a working group, you do not, do you, Mike?
No, I don't think so. You could just do it by consensus if the board is in agreement, and you don't need a formal vote, I don't believe.
If, if it's a working group, and it's not an official committee, then they don't need to have a posted meeting. You would only have to post the meeting for the Select Board if two of the Select Board members attend, if, if that's my understanding, right?
I would concur with that, yes. We will try to give Erin or somebody to do that, or Mike to do, to defend if there's other two committees on, three committees involved.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I'm happy to.
To make sure that it's posted so that the two of you can attend.
Reporting in progress.
I to.
That's weird.
I totally concur with the concept of the working group. How about the rest of the other two? Do you, Mr. Schultz, is your view okay?
Yes, absolutely.
And Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
I hear you.
Yes, sorry.
That's okay. Okay, so the board concurs with the concept of allowing, of forming the working group to explore in this area for, uh, the COA and whatever. Okay. Next one is local option for remote participation for boards and committees. Before I open the discussion, whatever we decide is the way it has to work for all committees. This isn't, well, this committee will work that way and that one will work this. These are guidelines that apply to every committee. Um, and basically, as I understand it, and I am going to defer to Mr. Gazinski and Ms. Beray in some of this, the idea here is that we as the board can establish the guidelines, if you will, a policy for allowing individuals to attend meetings, open meetings, using video or other media without being present, which would permit somebody on vacation, or who's ill, or whatever, who otherwise couldn't attend the meeting. There are caveats in all of this, dealing with such things as, um, you have to have a quorum who are present in the actual committee itself. Um, and you can't, I think towns like Medfield and others have adopted plans, you can't miss more than four actual meetings by doing, uh, the remote meeting concept. But it would permit committee members to not have to attend every meeting, which in our case is particularly advantageous because the three of us, there are going to be times when a committee member just cannot be present, but might be able to attend remotely. So I'd like to hear, but, excuse me, before I do that, do we have in this packet the Medfield? I, I've lost track of where I am in this, at this point, but I read through the Medfield concept, and it looked actually quite good. It was adopted by other towns, or the concept was.
Mr. Chairman, you do have a, a draft, um, remote participation policy, which was in your packet, which was a compilation of several different, um, or a couple of different communities. Um, Sam Hockenberry spent a considerable amount of time putting this together for the board for tonight's meeting. Um, and as you had indicated, uh, this would provide, if the board were to accept the, the, um, the local option, um, which it, it just requires acceptance by the local executive of, of the community, which would be the Select Board, um, then, um, all boards and committees within the town would be able to utilize this, um, if they so choose, um, and, uh, be able to, in, in the draft policy you have in your packet meets with all the requirements of the, of the local acceptance under state law. Um, I would just remind the board that, um, because of the policy you just reaffirmed this evening, you could discuss this, um, this evening and, and with the intention forward, but you'd have to wait to your next meeting to formally adopt it as a permanent policy, um, just because it needs a first reading. Um, however, if, you know, in certain circumstances, the board can adopt it temporarily if it deems that it, it's an urgent issue for the town. Um, but, uh, this will provide all of the, um, all, all the different, um, possibilities for individuals to attend remotely. In today's society, it, it is more difficult to physically get whole boards, um, together physically for every single meeting. So this provides an avenue, um, for certain exceptions when people are just out of town, or that they're, they're not, they're feeling a little under the weather, good enough to participate from home, but not appropriate for them to come to a meeting room filled with other people. Um, or if they're away on a business trip or something like that, they can still, uh, they can still participate.
Well, I did read through it. I thought it was quite well done. It seemed to cover everything. I'm not a lawyer, so I can't say that it's perfect in any sense legally, but it seems to cover all the issues. I like the concept. Um, but I think what I'll do is I'll open for discussion to the board, and then perhaps what we should do is give the community an opportunity to review it, as you were saying, and we'll vote on it at our next meeting if that's acceptable to the board. So I hereby open it to the board for discussion. Ms. Underhill?
I think it's a great idea. I think, um, I think it, there's many positive reasons to do that. I do have a question, like a more of a technical question. I guess if we use the Select Board as an example, for instance, let's say I am out of town, and you, the Chair, Mr. Jermaine, and Craig would be quorum and Chair physically attending. If we did it that way, how is it, how are people going to see, like, how does everybody see each other with the Zoom part? Maybe I'm.
You just muted yourself.
Maybe I think, maybe I'm thinking a little bit too forward, um, in terms of the, the details, but I was curious how we would still do that.
I would.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. I mean, I can say, I, I have seen it in action in other communities. Um, you know, communities have been doing this for at least, you know, five or six years, if not longer, um, based on when this was approved by the legislature quite, quite a while. Uh, essentially what I've seen is either a laptop, laptop or an iPad is set up, um, at the meeting site where the other members of the board can see the member participating remotely, as can the cable camera, um, to be able to film it. Um, and it's not perfect, but it, it's very workable. Um, and with the use of technology, we can certainly make that work, um, so that it can be a fairly interactive process. Um, and again, through, uh, either some sort of large tablet or a, or a laptop that can be accommodated. So what we'd probably do is make sure we had a, maybe a large screen laptop available for the meetings, um, when someone is participating remotely.
If I'm not mistaken, we could actually take the TV that's in the room 229 and attach a laptop to it as a monitor, so you could actually see it that way.
Absolutely. That would be an option. And then, and then they would be the biggest one in the room.
Bigger than life.
And Mr. Chair, I don't, I don't know if I missed when somebody noted it, but this is only, this is only for the actual committee members. If it's an open public meeting, the public can't call in. The public still needs to be present at the meeting. So this is just to help committee members.
That's, that's my question. Thank you, Karen. So, so the, the public is.
That's, that's correct. That's correct.
That is the discussion I had with Karen and Mike earlier this afternoon on precisely that issue.
This is not, yeah, that aspect would not be part of this acceptance. That's a separate issue. You know, if, if a board is meeting with, say, a consultants that asked to meet remotely, um, or, uh, just a member of the public that like, would like to be able to comment, uh, from remote, from a, a remote location, that is not part of this. That would be a separate issue. Um, that, that would be, that a board would take up separately and not part of this. This is purely for, um, voting members of a board or committee. Thank you.
Okay. So any other comments? Do you have a problem if we table this for now, and we'll make sure the community is aware of it, and we'll have discussion at the next meeting and then vote on it? Is that fair?
That's good.
Okay. Okay. The next item on our agenda is to authorize the issuance of an RFP for the salary study. And I'll let Mr. Gazinski explain why we need that salary study.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, uh, as the board is aware, the town meeting, um, not too long ago, funding for a personnel classification and compensation study, um, for all town employees, um, in the SEIU and other non-union employees working in the Veterans Memorial Building. Um, and, uh, we do, we have been, um, discussing this with the members of the SEIU for some time. Um, and, uh, the town has not conducted such a study in well over 10 years for this group of employees, and it's really, uh, very prudent for the town to do this, um, to make sure that the town is, is really, um, compensating its employees in an appropriate way. We try to, you know, be in, in the kind of the, the, set this so that we're paying a fair wage and sort of being in a comparable wage to comparable communities in the area. Um, and this would, this would meet that goal. Uh, we are, um, beginning negotiations, we're beginning negotiations with the SEIU, um, for a contract this fall. So the hopes is the study will be completed, um, you know, by, you know, September timeframe, and, uh, that will be an excellent tool for us to use in, um, in having those negotiations and understanding, you know, what the appropriate market rates are for comparable positions. Um, so I am, uh, and again, I'd like to thank, uh, Sam for putting this together. And again, he utilized models from other communities, put together this package for the board's review, and, um, I would say it's 95% complete. Um, we will have some tweaks to it, but what we're asking for this evening is the board's authorization to go ahead and put this out, this RFQ out, um, so that we can have a company in here, um, hopefully by the, by the end of July, and have a, a product done sometime by the end of September.
I will also add a quick comment. I will also add a quick comment. This is something the board did discuss earlier this year. I think, Erin, you're familiar with that. Craig, you weren't there at the time, but it is something that we felt was important. So I'll take a motion on this.
I'll make a motion that we authorize the town to go forward with the wage study, RFP.
Second.
So move and second it to allow the town to go forward with the wage study. I'll pull the board. Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
Mr. Jermaine, yes. Okay, so approved.
Standing. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. Letter to the state representatives regarding PFAS. Were you able to distribute this to everyone, Mr. Gazinski or Karen?
I thought I had, but I'll...
It's in the packet.
Yeah, I thought it was in the packet.
It is, isn't it?
Right. Have to just check myself.
I will note, Mr. Chair, that I'm assuming you would want to say, Dear Representatives Linsky and Dooley, and not have Dooley in parentheses here.
Just a second. What about Dooley?
See how it says, Dear Representative Linsky, and then Dooley in parentheses? I think it's because we were debating who we were gonna, who he wanted to send it to and not get...
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
We were trying to slight Dooley by putting him in parentheses, correct?
It was, it was my error. I left Dooley off. I was just trying to draft things.
And then, and then I took yours and I tried to just kind of format it a little bit and I forgot to change this piece. So I just, if Mr. Dooley happens to be watching, I apologize. This was not as a, this should go to both.
That, that was an oversight on my part and I do apologize. But at any rate, let me explain, this is pretty self-explanatory. We are trying to make sure we get funding as necessary if we can, because this is going to cost us a lot to mitigate the PFAS. But we're also trying to get a better explanation of what the levels of PFAS mean to us as residents of the town, how is it going to affect us. Right now, we know that there are cutoff limits. I can tell you that the government, the EPA has 70 parts per million. The town has 20. I've read where other places go to 160. It's all over the map. And there is no clear established understanding that I've been able to find that says, you know, at this level, you can expect that if you, let's say, drank 20 glasses of water with this a day, over 10 years, you might have this susceptibility. You know, we're trying to get an understanding of what does this really mean? We're not suggesting that there isn't a concern. That's not the issue. The issue is, let us understand the levels the way we do, say, for radiation. We know in radiation exposure, if you have so much exposure over a period of time to the body, it means this to you. And that's the kind of thing we're looking for, and that has not been forthcoming. So we're looking at all of these, and then we got to the point of understanding what the alternative resources are if we did have to shut down wells and begin to bring in outside water. Because it turns out virtually every container of water, because of the way it's manufactured with the plastics, contains PFAS. And there isn't any measurement really that's being made on the water that we're drinking today in the plastic containers. So if we're measuring it for the community and saying, okay, your alternative to not drinking well water is less than such, we at least want to know that the water we're drinking out of plastic bottles is in fact meeting the standards that we have to meet, something that hasn't been readily available in any of the material we could find. So that's why this was drafted. And what we're looking for is to try to put together a letter to our representatives so that they're aware of these and can assist us in getting answers from the EPA and can assist us in potentially getting funding in the 12 to 15 million dollar range. I'll take 11 if they'll only give it, but, to help offset the costs that we are likely to incur putting in the mitigation facilities. And the last part is, we're also asking them to defer some of these standards for a year or so, because even if we agreed and we had the money today, we could order these mitigation facilities, but it's going to take, say, approximately a year, assuming they're even available at that time, to get them installed at least at one or two sites. So there are a lot of issues here that we're trying to bring to the attention of our representatives. So that's why this letter was drafted. So it's open for discussion.
I have a few thoughts. So part of me is wondering, you know, in a comparison to radiation, I'm just wondering if maybe they, there is not the data to have that kind of proof of what the effects will be over however many years. Because from what I'm seeing, it looks like, for instance, 3M halted it in 2002. So there's some time there, but I don't know what kind of studies have been done. So I'm looking at this in two different ways. So one way is, we have this requirement on us right now. We know it's going to cost a significant amount of money to mitigate this, and we're looking for relief from that. The other side of the coin is trying to get somebody to scientifically explain to us exactly what the risks are and, you know, just maybe so just, we just have at least a better understanding. I'm wondering if there is, if it's helpful to throw both things out in the same time? Would it be more, would it be more accepted if we just went with the angle of, well, here are the, here are the requirements, here are the restrictions, here's where we sit, how can you help us? Versus, do we want to throw all of that out within the one letter?
Sure. Yeah, I read it over. I had similar thoughts to Erin. I think there's a really strong case to be made for the financial impact that we have on the town. But short of knowing, but I think rolling it all into one letter, it feels like too many different things. I think pushing hard for financial assistance, making sure that they clearly understand the impact this has on the town, but stayed away from some of the, explaining the science to us. This letter, that might be super, because it will sell.
Okay. I, the reason both are in there, and I have no problem if we broke it into two, is there was an earlier letter that the select board sent to the state, to the representatives and the DEP, and they didn't answer, the DEP did not really answer any of those questions. And that's part of why this was coming up. It was something that Mike and I looked at and said, you know, they skirted all around, never answered anything directly, and we don't know what the implications are. I agree with you. It would be nice to understand it. But we also are confronted with coming up with mitigation regardless. And so in the interim, we have people who are very concerned about using the town water, even though many of the wells are in fact meeting or exceeding the conditions that we have to worry about. But people do ask the questions, you know, is even that level okay? And in answer to your question, Erin, yeah, they've been studying this for close to 30 years. And there are studies that they think point, but the levels are through the roof. And that's why I couldn't draw any correlation. I looked at some studies in Europe. I've looked at studies in Texas, Oregon, I'm trying to remember, Washington or Vermont, I don't know, did any studies. They just took guidelines and rewrote some of them. But there are a number of states, but none of them really addressed, how did you arrive at this number? Even the EPA, when I asked somebody there, it was, well, we know that's safe. Okay, that's as far as I could get. I mean, they knew they couldn't be sued at that 70 parts per trillion level because they knew it was safe.
And the science isn't in writing either. So I think people would still be, I think we'd still run the risk of residents still being scared to use the water, no matter, probably no matter what it is now that it's been exposed as a thing. Is, with Kleinfelder that, you know, we contract with, is there an element to this where they could do, are they contracted to do or assist with any community outreach that could perhaps form a more educational, fill a gap there so that maybe people won't be as scared to use the water? I just don't know if you're going to get an answer from them. You didn't get an answer the first time. I really don't think they're going to answer you.
They may not. My hope was that by bringing some pressure to bear from representatives, because it ultimately comes back to the representatives in terms of, you impose standards, by the way, on a lot of communities that are beginning to get pushback, that financially, if you read in the paper this week, was it this weekend or last, that they don't, they don't have the financial wherewithal either. I mean, the state is literally facing an issue now that DEP has set up standards that the communities can only meet by putting in exorbitant sums of money to those communities so you know, and they've already admitted they're going after the state and their representatives to help fund this. I think my intent is to be one more putting pressure on, but pressure from the perspective of, we're not saying we don't want to do it. We're saying, we need to do it. We need your help, and we'd also like to understand why it's happening, because you're agreeing in essence to these law, rules of the DEP. Well, you are the ones who agreed to these rules, and this is where we're at. So where do we go from here, guys? And that's basically where this is coming from. Again, I have no problem if you think we ought to break it into two letters, let's do it.
Yeah, I, I think that the pushing for money is one area that's important. I don't think any amount of education from DEP might, but you also are going to make people who are concerned with PFAS in the water comfortable. You know, we tell them 20, you know, 70, whatever the legal limit is, I know it's 20 for us, but I mean, I don't think any, I think as long as people see that it's there, there's going to be a small subset that's always concerned that it's there. I think that explaining to these representatives that we have asked DEP for clarification, and maybe they can push for clarification, is a standalone letter, taken from the approach of, how can we explain this to our constituents when DEP hasn't told us anything about it and none of us are biopinners? So give us something that we can explain and how you arrived at this 20 parts per trillion. And is that really 21 parts fatal? Or why do some, F70? Why do some states 160? So I think that it really is two letters, help us with funding and then also help us get answers, get DEP to explain it to us. I don't think Kleinfelder would be the people to explain it to us, because they can explain why 20 is surely, less than 20 is surely safe, but DEP has to explain how they arrived at these numbers.
Mr. Chair, one, one other thing to note. I don't know if, I can't recall if the first letter was also sent to Senator Becker Rousch, but I, I don't know if, especially if it was, you might want to add her on this one You're on mute.
Pete, you're muted. There you go, sorry.
All of a sudden, everything went mute.
You know what? There was a lot of feedback, so I muted you. See, it's coming.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. We can definitely include Senator Rousch. It was not per se an oversight. It's just that we knew that Representatives Linsky and Dooley are much more attuned to what's going on here, but we'll certainly include her so that there's no oversight. How about if we draft two letters, we'll get them out to the members of the committee, you make your comments back to Mr. Gazinski, and we'll try to get a final form for both of them to go out at the next meeting. Is that reasonable?
Yeah.
That's fine.
Okay.
Mr. Jermaine, if I might?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, you know, I, I was wondering, you were a newbie when Jim McKay brought in the Worcester DEP region folks on one of your first meetings. And I would suggest that now that there's two new members, that you request them to come in and repeat their presentation and give a one-year update on it. And they're very receptive, especially if they could Zoom. They came to Milis last year, but that would just be, I, I think you're going to get more answers from them than you would from our Senator Inez about what the update and why it is like that. I mean, she can tell you what the law is. She can't offer to change it or anything or advocate for it, but it was a, it was a great learning lesson that I think the other two, Mr. Chair, would benefit. Thank you.
Keep getting muted here.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair. I'm sorry, that's me muting you because for some reason you've taken off, you've taken over Mr. McCaffrey's feedback issue.
Oh.
No, I'm not kidding. I'm muting.
No kidding?
Yep.
Okay, I apologize.
All right.
Okay. But we can certainly look into that. I think what's also of interest to me is what's going on in other communities throughout the state. From what I was reading, they're all beginning to become much more aware and seeking a lot more information on this. And it's clear that DEP isn't providing much in that regard, so we need to get that. But I think Ms. McGinnis has an interesting point there that we should follow up. Okay, I'll move forward to the next meeting on these letters and make sure you both have a chance. And feel free to make other comments between now and then to Mr. Gazinski so that we can incorporate them. Fair enough?
Sounds good.
Juneteenth State Holiday. Mr. Gazinski has provided us with an understanding of what this is, what happened in Texas on June 19th, what was it, 1865 or something? So I think he's probably best suited to explain what the Juneteenth Holiday is.
Thank you, Mr. Jermaine. Just to give a little background, I'm sure most people know this, or if not, they, they will pretty soon. But Juneteenth is the newest holiday that the Commonwealth of Massachusetts has recognized. It commemorates, as you mentioned, the date of June 19th, 1865, where the last announcements were made following the Civil War, that the, all the slaves in the Confederate states were set free. And it has now been made a holiday in, I think, five or six states in the country. Massachusetts recognized it last year as an official state holiday. I have had some questions to me in regards to what the town's position is on, on the holiday. And I've had discussions with our Labor Council as well as other communities. There's a broad mix of reactions this year in regards to how towns are recognizing it. I just wanted to note that all of our collective bargaining contracts specifically list the specific holidays that the town of Milis recognizes. the specific holidays that the town of Milis recognizes. Juneteenth is not currently on that list. And just to let you know also that the recognition of holidays, and specifically paid holidays, is a mandatory subject of bargaining with the collective bargaining units under Mass. General Launch up to 150E. I am recommending that the board, you know, meet with the unions this fall to discuss this and with the, with the goal of having this negotiated as part of the union negotiations, which are all coming up this fall, to have this recognized effective next year in Juneteenth of 2022. This year, it happens to fall on a Saturday, so it is not that much of an impact, but certainly an important date. And now that it's a state holiday, I think it's incumbent on the town to meet with the unions and start discussing this. Just wanted to put it out there for the board's knowledge and discussion. And my recommendation is, is to make this part of the negotiations with all the unions this fall. I think you're still muted, Pete.
Okay. Any comments from the board? I'll try to remember that I keep getting muted.
Kathy, you're unmuted. Keep trying to help her out. No, my comment, it's how funny it can be. I've been Zoom meeting for 14 months now. I got this down to an art. My thought is, it's an important holiday. It's a holiday that has to go through negotiations, obviously. So as long as we're making strides to put it in the collective bargaining for the next cycle, I think it's great that we're taking action towards it.
Agreed.
I concur. So we'll put it in for negotiations. Is that what you need, Mr. Gazinski?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to unmute that to the board and just for the board's acknowledgement and let the public know it's something that we're reviewing and will be negotiating to make it a recognized, fully recognized holiday in the town of Milis.
Very good. Okay.
Thank you.
And I think we're on to the approval of the Water Sewer Commitment, if I'm not mistaken.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. We have the commitment, the Water and Sewer Commitment for the Collector for May of 2021 for a total of $3,087.25.
I'll take a motion on that.
I move that we approve the Water Sewer Commitment to the Collector for May 2021 in fiscal year 2021 in the amount of $3,087.25.
Second. So move and seconded to approve the Water Sewer Commitment to the Collector for May 2021 in the amount of $3,087.25. I'll poll the board. Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
Mr. Jermaine? Yes. Motion carries unanimously. Okay, I think we reached the point of the night where we're going to adjourn to executive session. So I think we need to agree, what is it, to adjourn to the session at this time?
Mr. Chairman, you vote to go into executive session and to come out of executive session for sole purpose of adjournment. And you'd be going into executive session to consider the purchase, exchange, lease or value of real estate, 61A parcel on Villistree, and for strategy with respect to potential litigation regarding property on Forest Road, and strategy with respect to ongoing litigation, a litigation update from Town Council.
Okay, and before I take a vote on adjourning to executive session, at which time we will, what's the term?
Be demerged to adjourn?
For the sole purpose of adjournment, open session.
Just open session. Does everyone have a link to the executive session? Okay. And I'll poll the board to adjourn to executive session. Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Mr. Jermaine? Yes. Thank you all very much. Good night, and we'll see you at our next meeting.
Thank you.
Bye. Thanks.